Would you please call the roll to ascertain the presence of?
Thank you, Madam President. Counselor Arroyo. Counselor Baker. Oh, is Counselor Arroyo?
Here, sorry.
That's okay. Counselor Baker.
Yep.
Counselor Bach.
Present.
Counselor Brayden.
Present.
Counselor Campbell.
Here.
Counselor Edwards.
Present.
Counselor Isaby George.
Present.
Counselor Flaherty.
Yeah.
Counselor Flynn.
Here.
Counselor Jamie.
Present.
Counselor Mejia.
Present.
Counselor O'Malley.
Present.
And Counselor Wolf.
Present.
Madam President, we have all in attendance.
Thank you so much. I've been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present and we will begin with our clergy and I'm going to invite Counselor O'Malley to introduce our clergy this morning. Counselor O'Malley?
Thank you, Madam President. Good afternoon, colleagues. I am honored to introduce a very dear friend to me, a neighbor of mine, Reverend Ben Perkins, who's the Associate Pastor and Community Minister for Hope Central Congregational Church in Jamaica Plain. He's ordained with the UCC and Disciples of Christ in addition to his incredible spiritual work. Ben's also, Reverend Perkins is also a public health leader, working for the American Heart Association, where he's the Vice President of Multicultural Initiatives and Health Equity. Prior to that, Reverend Perkins spent about 15 years at Fenway Community Health Center, working on HIV and other cases in District Eight. Ben and his family live in West Roxbury and they're just wonderful, dear friends to Catherine and me. And I'm delighted that he's been able to join us again. This is his second time offering an invocation. So please join me in welcoming the Reverend Benjamin Perkins.
Hey, good afternoon, everyone, and thanks, Matt, for the kind introduction. I'm very honored to be here. And one thing I was thinking about is this week in the Christian faith tradition, we commemorated the Festival of Pentecost, which some people consider the birth of the church. And one of the things I find most interesting about this particular celebration is that the idea was that people were gathered, they spoke different languages, and the spirit came in a room and folks were able to understand each other. It wasn't that their differences were eliminated, but they actually understood each other, even in speaking different languages. So it's in that spirit that I want to offer these words of invocation. So whether you're religious or secular or whatever, I invite you to enter into this prayer with me. O one of many names and no name, who is above all else, love and justice. We come to you to ask your blessing on this gathering of our civic leaders and community in this time of great suffering and anguish, rage and sorrow, despair and yearning, grief and reckoning. We ask that you bless our neighborhoods and families that animate our dear city. Bless our medical staff, service workers, mental health workers, law enforcement officers, EMTs, our faith leaders, our students and teachers. O loving one, our hearts are broken, we are blind with weeping, yet we rightly intuit that we are capable of so much more, a birthright of love and equity. And so we ask that you instill, and all gather here, a renewed resolve in the moral and ethical will and imagination to do the work of peacemaking bound to justice, so that all may birdwatch, jog, ask for help, play loud music, sell CDs, walk to the corner store, sleep, worship without terror, and most of all, to live to the full measure of their years, knowing that their lives had incalculable priceless value. And we ask this in all, in the name of all that is holy and just and true, for love's sake. Amen.
Well, now pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God. In difficult, with liberty and justice. Thank you so much for that wonderful, inspiring word. And as we close out, as we began with prayer and with the Pledge of Allegiance, I'm reminded of a former colleague of ours, or for many of us, during my first year, Congresswoman Ayanna Pressley served on the council. And she would always end the Pledge of Allegiance with someday. Justice for all someday. And I imagine that when she said that, that made people uncomfortable. And I bring it up because I think it's important that we get comfortable with being uncomfortable. We're in a modern day civil rights movement, and what is at stake is the soul of our nation. So this afternoon, I would like for us to reflect on our role in this moment. I would like for us to sit and be uncomfortable as we reflect what it was like for Mr. George Floyd. And as we do that, I would like for us to think about our own privileged position and power, and not just as counselors, because some of us have more of that than others. Think about that and how that played into this scenario and what we can do as a body to prevent something like this from happening again. As people know, Mr. Floyd was pinned down by a police officer's neck, on his neck by a police officer's knee. And that was for a full eight minutes and 46 seconds as he pleaded for his breath and cried out for his mama. So I would like for us to take a moment to reflect and to reflect on how we, as the Boston City Council, can do more to create a more just and equitable society. So I'm going to ask us to take this moment right now. I ask anyone who is watching to do the same, to reflect, not to turn away, not to run away and get something to eat really quick, but to really take this moment to reflect on what each of us can do to prevent this from happening again. Eight minutes, 46 seconds, a moment of silence. Thank you. I would ask that that be the only silence that we take in moments like this. Because what we really need is we need everyone's voice. Folks may be aware, there was a press conference yesterday with elected officials of color across the Commonwealth. And I said yesterday that we need everyone in this fight. And so when you see injustice, and it's all around us, I really hope that people speak up. And I'm really proud of the ways that this body has already done that. This council has done amazing work in my first term on the body and certainly these first six months in my second term, and I'm really proud of that. And I ask that we continue to do that work. And we remember that it is the George Floyds in Boston, in our districts, that we are fighting for. So thank you for all the work that you're doing. I want to give a special shout out to all of our staff, all the council staff and the central staff, who have been working hard these past six months under really difficult conditions with COVID-19 and now everything else that's going on. So thank you for all that you're doing, and I want to thank my colleagues as well. Now on to the First Order of Business, which is the approval of the minutes. If there are no corrections to be made to the minutes of the last meeting, they will stand as approved. Seeing and hearing no objections. And I'm looking at the screen here. The minutes are so approved. I should say right now for my colleagues and anyone that is watching, I am having technical difficulties, so please be patient with me as I try to navigate this Zoom meeting from my cellphone. So please be patient. Thank you. We'll now move on from, move on to communications from His Honor, the mayor. And Madam Clerk, if you could please read docket 0729, that would be great.
Docket 0729, I would like to bring to the attention of the council that although the verbiage does say $10 million, the numerics say $10,000. The amount is $10 million. Docket 0729, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expand reimbursements up to the amount of $10 million from the Federal Emergency Management Agency and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for expenses related to the COVID-19 pandemic.
Thank you. Docket 0729 will be referred to the Committee on Public Health. And now we'll go on to docket 0730.
Docket 0730, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $30,800 in the form of a grant for the FY19 Fair Housing Assistance Program awarded by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development to be administered by the Department of Fair Housing and Equity. The grant will fund training costs related to processing housing discrimination complaints received by the Boston Fair Housing and Equity Commission.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Edwards. Counselor Edwards, you have the floor.
Very much, Madam President. Considering the amount and considering that it's going to do work that this body already supports, and it's going to Fair Housing, I'm hoping that we would go ahead today and suspend the rules and pass and allow for this money to immediately go to Fair Housing and get to the folks there to do their good work.
Thank you so much. Counselor Edwards seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0730. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Nay. The ayes have it, and docket 0730 has been passed. Madam Clerk, could you please read docket 0731?
Docket 0731, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $4,292 in the form of a grant for the Street Outreach Unit opioid COVID-19 pilot program awarded by the Police Assisted Addiction and Recovery Initiative to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund the purchase and disbursement of up to 30 smartphones for high uses of emergency services, known as Hughes, in order to maintain biweekly contact through the Police Assisted Addiction Recovery Initiative. Hughes will also receive knock-in training and training, along with a list of virtual support groups. The phones will allow collection of baseline data and ensure that the Street Outreach Unit can maintain contact and continue building rapport with their clients during the pandemic.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Campbell, the Chair of our Public Safety Criminal Justice Committee. Counselor Campbell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. As Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, I seek suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0731. It is pretty self-explanatory. It's a grant for our Street Outreach Unit, and it allows them to purchase smartphones to stay in contact with their clients during the pandemic. I seek suspension of the rules and passage today, so those folks can get those funds immediately. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Campbell seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0731. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0731 has been passed. We will read docket 0732 and docket 0733 together, Madam Clerk, please.
Thank you, Madam President. Docket 0732, message and order for your approval in order authorizing the City of Boston to increase the elderly property tax exemption pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 11C, from $750 to $1,000, effective for the fiscal year 2021. And docket number 0733, message and order for the approval of the order authorizing the City of Boston to lower the interest rate that accrued on property tax deferred for eligible seniors from 4% to 1%, effective for the fiscal year 2021, pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 1A.
Thank you. Docket 0732 and docket 0733 will be referred to the Committee on Ways and Means. Madam Clerk, could you please read docket 0734?
Thank you. Docket 0734, message and order to declare surplus-owned former Public Works Department parcel property, known as Windsor Street in the Roxbury District, Ward 9, Parcel 02025020, will transfer the care, custody, management, and control of said property to the Public Facilities Commission.
Thank you. Docket 0734 will be referred to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. Madam Clerk, could you please read dockets 0735 through 0737?
Thank you. Docket 0735, message and order for the confirmation of the reappointment of Rebecca Goodman as a member of the Boston Public Health Commission's Board of Health for a term expiring on January 15, 2023. Docket number 0736, message and order for the confirmation of the reappointment of Manny Loops as a member of the Boston Public Health Commission's Board of Health for term expiring January 15, 2023. And docket number 0737, message and order for the confirmation of the appointment of Jewel Valdez as a member of the Boston Public Health Commission's Board of Health for term expiring January 15, 2022.
Thank you. Docket 0735 through 0737 will be referred to the Committee on Public Health. We'll now go on to docket 0738 through 0743.
Thank you. Docket 0738, message and order for the confirmation of the reappointment of Nelson Arroyo as a member of the Zoning Commission for a term ending May 1, 2022. Docket number 0739, message and order for the confirmation of the reappointment of Jane Cooper Brayton as a member of the Zoning Commission for a term ending May 1, 2022. Docket number 0740, message and order for the confirmation of the reappointment of Drew Left as a member of the Zoning Commission for a term ending May 1, 2021. Docket number 00741, message and order for the confirmation of the reappointment of Joel Pierce as a member of the Beacon Hill Architectural Commission for term ending May 1, 2021. Docket number 0742, message and order for the confirmation of the reappointment of Pete B. Weinberg as a member of the Beacon Hill Architectural Commission for term ending May 1, 2022. And docket number 0743, message and order for the confirmation of the appointment of Justine Orlando as a member of the Boston Land Management Commission for a term expiring June 30, 2022.
Thank you. Docket 0738 through 0743 will be referred to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. Madam Clerk, could you please read docket 0744?
Thank you. Docket 0744, message and order for the confirmation of the reappointment of Michael Woodall as the Chair of the Boston Water and Sewer Commission for term ending January 1, 2024.
Thank you. Docket 0744 will be referred to the Committee on City and Neighborhood Services. We will now move on to reports of committees. For those that are watching, the next set of dockets are regarding our budget. This is obviously one of the most important things that we do as a Boston City Council, and we all know that our budget is a value statement. So we will read dockets 0588 through 0592 together. This is the first of a vote. And our Chair will kind of go through some more in that process. So we'll read these dockets and then we'll call upon our Chair. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Docket 0588, the Committee on Ways and Means, to which is referred on April 8, 2020. Docket number 0588, message and order for annual appropriation and tax order for FY 2021, submits a report recommending the order ought to be rejected without prejudice. Docket number 0589, the Committee on Ways and Means, to which is referred on April 8, 2020. Docket number 0589, message and order for annual appropriation for the school department for FY 2021, submits a report recommending the order ought to be rejected without prejudice. Docket number 0590, the Committee on Ways and Means, to which is referred on April 8, 2020. Docket number 0590, message and order approving an appropriation of $40 million to the other post-employment benefits known as OPEB Liability Trust Fund, established by Section 20 of the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 32B, submits a report recommending the order ought to be rejected without prejudice. Docket number 0591, the Committee on Ways and Means, to which is referred on April 8, 2020. Docket number 0591, message and order approving an appropriation of $27,200,000 from the city's capital grant fund in order to provide funding for various transportation and public realm improvements. Submits a report recommending the order ought to be rejected without prejudice. And docket number 0592, the Committee on Ways and Means, to which is referred on April 8, 2020. Docket number 0592, message and order approving the appropriation of $7 million from the city's capital grant fund to address the impact of transportation network services on municipal on municipal roads, bridges, and other transportation infrastructure of any other public purpose substantially related to the operation of transportation network services in the city, submits a report recommending the order ought to be rejected without prejudice.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And as I mentioned earlier, we're going to take each docket separately. It'll be a roll call vote. I want to let my colleagues know. So, one, I'm going to call on the Chair, and my goal is that we will vote right after we hear from the Chair. I know many of my colleagues are doing amazing work and have a lot of strong advocacy as it relates to the budget, as do I, and I'm going to ask that we all continue that advocacy in our hearings. There are more budget hearings that are happening, and we have other platforms that we can make that known for this. We're going to hear from the Chair. We're going to take the vote. At the final vote at the end of the month, obviously, we will all have lots to say about that, and so that's how I'd like to set this up. So with that said, I will now call upon the Chair of the Ways and Means Committee. Chair Bach, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President. Over the past two months, the City Councils had 27 hearings and nine working sessions related to the budget. And as the Council President has just said, the budget process is going to be ongoing for the coming weeks. I want to give folks at home the orientation that the City Council gets budget orders from the mayor in the second week of April, and needs to act on those orders, or else they will just become the budget by the second Wednesday in June. We also need to act on some of these orders, which are called 60-day orders, within 60 days of them being submitted, or else, again, they pass into law. In this case this year, the second Wednesday in June would be after the 60-day order deadline. So for a number of our dockets, including capital and some transfer dockets related to operating, the City Council needs to act today in order to keep the budget process with both public input and City Council input going. I do just want to say we've had amazing participation from my colleagues. I, as Chair, have been very grateful. The working sessions generated a ton of questions that enabled us to have a more productive conversation with the administration. We've also gotten a large amount of public testimony, both written and delivered in person. And if you are watching at home and you go to boston.gov/council-fy21budget, you will find the notices related to all the hearings, and attached to those notices, you'll see, you can see the public testimony, you can see the responses to information submitted by the administration. There's a lot of information there, and that process, again, is ongoing. So I would encourage folks who want to testify and make their voices heard on the budget to continue doing that over the coming weeks. Today, with these dockets that we have before us, I'm recommending that we reject without prejudice this series of dockets related to the operating budget. So there's the general operating budget, there's also the schools' operating budget, and a few other items mixed in there. There's a couple of reasons to take this rejection vote today. One is that, as I said, we need to do so, you know, in order to keep the conversation going. Also, the City Council, really, I think, one thing that I've heard loud and clear from colleagues, and I'll speak on behalf of the body today, is, you know, that this, the budget that we pass at the end of this month needs to be a budget that meets this moment of COVID-19, and also of the, you know, the police brutality and the other, the other serious issues of systemic racism that our society is grappling with. And so that conversation is going to have to continue. It's also important for folks to understand that because of COVID-19 and the current economic crisis, this is unfortunately going to be the first budget in a decade where the resubmission will be lower in size than the submission that we had in April. So the city budget is partly supported by excise taxes, which are based on things like hotels and restaurants, and supported also through state aid, which comes obviously from the state budget. And so there needs to be a serious, ongoing conversation about how to adjust for the economic situation that we find ourselves in, even as the needs that we face are greater than ever. So that is the context in which we find ourselves today. I do want to just flag that, like that throughout this process, there's been a lot in this budget that the City Council is really excited about. There's a commitment to an urban forestry plan, and more arborists, and looking at getting more trees planted around our city, and getting them planted in an equitable way. There's, you know, a bunch of new supports for students in our public schools, including family liaisons and social workers. There's more money for affordable housing, you know, in a first-time-ever city rental voucher program, in funding to create more affordable housing and to support family homelessness. So there's a lot of things in this budget that, though it was proposed prior to COVID-19, I think this body is excited about. There are also a bunch of things that people, you know, that I think are part of meeting that moment, right? So there's issues around how the city is expanding its commitments to food access, to language access, to youth jobs this summer, to all the supports we need to take care of our kids in this moment of drama and learning loss, to, you know, support for our small businesses and building an equitable economic recovery, and questions also about our safety, our public safety budget, the size of our overtime commitments. So those are, that, I say those things on behalf of the body to say we're going to be having, as the President alluded to, a conversation in the coming weeks. But in order for us to consider a resubmitted budget and hold our hearings on it and discuss it, we need to take a vote today to reject without prejudice dockets 0588, 0589, 0590, 0591, and 0592. The one technical note I'll make for colleagues, a couple of those are transfer dockets, and so they're related to operating dollars, but they also take the form of 60-day orders, and that's part of the reason why we're taking the vote this week rather than next week. So, Madam President, I'd like to respectfully recommend a vote to reject without prejudice on those five dockets.
Great. And if there's nothing-
Point of clarity, Madam Chair. So just to be clear, Kenzie, a yes vote is to reject these moving forward, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. Sorry to break in like that.
No worries. You come up early, so I understand the need for clarification. All right, so here we go. If there's nothing else burning, we're going to go right into it. First up is Docket 0588. Counselor Bach seeks acceptance of the committee report and recommends that the council reject without prejudice. Docket 0588. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you, Madam President. Counselor Arroyo?
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Baugh?
Yes.
Counselor Baugh, yes. Counselor Brayden?
Yes.
Counselor Brayden, yes. Counselor Campbell?
Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Asabi George?
Yes.
Counselor Asabi George, yes. Counselor Flaherty?
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn?
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Janey?
Yes.
Counselor Janey, yes. Counselor Mejia?
Yes.
Counselor Mejia, yes. Counselor O'Malley?
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes. And Counselor Wu?
Yes.
Counselor Wu, yes. Madam President, Docket number 0588 has received a unanimous vote.
Thank you. The committee report has been accepted, and Docket 0588 has been rejected without prejudice. Next up is Docket 0589. Counselor Bach seeks acceptance of the committee report and recommends that the council reject without prejudice. Docket 0589. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
I will. Thank you, Madam President. Counselor Arroyo?
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Baugh?
Yes.
Counselor Baugh, yes. Counselor Brayden?
Yes.
Counselor Brayden, yes. Counselor Campbell?
Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Asabi George?
Yes.
Counselor Asabi George, yes. Counselor Flaherty?
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn?
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Janey?
Yes.
Counselor Janey, yes. Counselor Mejia?
Yes.
Counselor Mejia, yes. Counselor O'Malley?
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes. And Counselor Wu?
Yes.
Counselor Wu, yes. Madam President, Docket number 0589 has received a unanimous vote.
Thank you. The committee report has been accepted, and Docket 0589 has been rejected without prejudice. Counselor Bach seeks acceptance of committee report and recommends that the council reject without prejudice. Docket 0590. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Thank you. Counselor Arroyo?
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Baugh?
Yes.
Counselor Baugh, yes. Counselor Brayden?
Yes.
Counselor Brayden, yes. Counselor Campbell?
Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Asabi George?
Yes.
Counselor Asabi George, yes. Counselor Flaherty?
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn?
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Janey?
Yes.
Counselor Janey, yes. Counselor Mejia?
Yes.
Counselor Mejia, yes. Counselor O'Malley?
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes. And Counselor Wu?
Yes.
Counselor Wu, yes. Madam President, Docket number 0590 has received a unanimous vote.
Thank you. The committee report has been accepted, and Docket 0590 has been rejected without prejudice. Counselor Bach seeks acceptance of the committee report and recommends that the council reject without prejudice. Docket 0591. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Arroyo?
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Baugh?
Yes.
Counselor Baugh, yes. Counselor Brayden?
Yes.
Counselor Brayden, yes. Counselor Campbell?
Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Edwards?
All right, I was on mute. Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Asabi George?
Yes.
Counselor Asabi George, yes. Counselor Flaherty? Counselor Flaherty? Counselor Flynn?
Yes, Madam Clerk, I was having some technical difficulties here.
Okay. You reported as yes. Thank you. Counselor Flynn?
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Janey?
Yes.
Counselor Janey, yes. Counselor Mejia?
Yes.
Counselor Mejia, yes. Counselor O'Malley?
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes. And Counselor Wu?
Yes.
Counselor Wu, yes. Madam President, Docket number 0591 has received a unanimous-
Thank you. The committee report has been accepted, and Docket 0591 has been rejected without prejudice. Next up is 0592. Counselor Bach seeks acceptance of the committee report and recommends that the council reject without prejudice. Docket 0592. Madam Clerk?
Counselor Arroyo?
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Baugh?
Yes.
Counselor Baugh, yes. Counselor Brayden?
Yes.
Counselor Brayden, yes. Counselor Campbell?
Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Asabi George?
Yes.
Counselor Asabi George, yes. Counselor Flaherty?
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn?
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Janey?
Yes.
Counselor Janey, yes. Counselor Mejia?
Yes.
Counselor Mejia, yes. Counselor O'Malley?
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes. And Counselor Wu?
Yes.
Counselor Wu, yes. Madam President, Docket number 0592 has received a unanimous vote.
Thank you. The committee report has been accepted, and Docket 0592 has been rejected without prejudice. Madam Clerk, if you could read Docket 0597.
Thank you, Madam President. Docket 0597, the Committee on Ways and Means, to which was referred on April 8, 2020. Docket number 0597, message in order authorizing the appropriation of $1,300,000 from the income of the George Francis Parkman Fund, submits a report recommending the order ought to pass.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counselor Bach, the Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means. Counselor Bach, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. The Parkman Fund is a long-existing fund, which is to be expended under the direction of the Commissioner of Parks and Rec for the maintenance and improvement of Boston Common Parks in existence since 1887. So it's basically a legacy fund that help funds maintenance and improvements to parks like the Public Garden and the Common in the heart of the city. So these funds, it's a trust fund, these funds have to be used for this purpose, and the appropriation this year would authorize $1.3 million, which would go to a mix of general care of the park, specialized maintenance of the horticulture and infrastructure, and some new park equipment and repairs. This is the money for which the purpose for which this money is intended, and my recommendation, Madam President, is that this matter ought to pass.
Thank you. Counselor Bach seeks acceptance of, no, wait. What docket are we on?
We're on 97. I seek acceptance of the committee report.
Yes. Counselor Bach seeks acceptance. No, no, you want this to, you want us to, what's that?
Yes, to pass it.
Yes. Counselor Bach seeks acceptance of the committee report in passage of, and I want to make sure I get the docket right, that we're on Docket 0598?
No, 0597.
What's that?
97.
97. Thank you so much, and I apologize again for the technical difficulties. So I'm going to, we can do the all ayes here?
Yeah.
Can I hear from my colleagues?
Aye.
Everyone in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. The ayes have it, and Docket 0597 has been passed. We're on now Docket 0598?
Thank you. Docket 0598, the Committee on Ways and Means, to which was referred on April 8, 2020. Docket number 05, message in order approving the appropriation of $4,400,000 from the 21st Century Fund, also known as the Public Educational and Governmental, known as PEG, Access and Cable Related Fund pursuant to Section 53F and 3/4 of Chapter 44 of the General Laws to the PEG Access and Cable Related Grant for cable-related purposes consistent with franchise agreements between cable operator and the city, including but not limited to: (1) supporting public educational or governmental access cable television services; (2) monitoring compliance with the operator with franchise agreement; (3) preparation of new and franchise license, submits a report recommending the order ought to pass.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Bach. Counselor Bach, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. So this order is for the PEG, the 21st Century Access Fund. We heard in our hearing from Glenn Williams from the Boston Neighborhood Network, and also from Theodora Hannah from Techco's Home. These are the two main entities that we fund with this money to do things like provide access to, across the digital divide to, I think, Techco's Home has distributed 14,500 new computers and helped 22,000 people navigate online resources over the last five years, and actually has really ramped up their work during the pandemic. And BNN, as we all know, actually helps carry Boston City Council TV, which we are appearing on now, and a large number of other excellent programs. We did discuss with Do-It the fact that because this is paid for through cable access fees, and there's been a decline in recent years in those, this fund may become more limited as a source in the future, in future fiscal years, and we may need to work as a council to think about how we support these important things through other mechanisms. But for this year, the trust fund is adequately capitalized to support this appropriation, and as we heard in the hearing, it's really important work to give our citizens in Boston access to public programming and then access to, you know, the internet, which, as we all know, is really an essential utility of life these days. So my recommendation as Chair is that today this item ought to pass.
Thank you. Counselor Bach seeks acceptance of the committee report in passage of Docket 0598. All those in- All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? The ayes have it. And docket 0598 has been passed. Madam Clerk, if we could please read docket 0599 through 0611, that would be great.
Thank you, Madam President. Docket 0599, the Committee on Ways and Means to which was referred on April 8, 2020, docket number 0599, message and order authorizing a law revolving fund for fiscal year 2021 to purchase goods and services for repairs to city property. Submit a report recommending the order ought to pass. Docket number 0600, the Committee on Ways and Means to which was referred, to which was referred, I'm sorry, to which was referred on April 8, 2020, docket number 0600, message and order authorizing a limit for the mayor's office of tourism revolving fund for fiscal year 2021 to purchase goods and services to support events and programming on and around City Hall Plaza, to advance tourism, to promote participation in public celebrations, civic and cultural events, and submit a report recommending the order ought to pass. Docket number 0601, the Committee on Ways and Means to which was referred on April 8, 2020, docket number 0601, message and order authorizing a limit for the mayor's Office of Arts and Culture Revolving Fund for fiscal year 2021 to purchase goods and services to support operation of the Strand Theater. Submit a report recommending the order ought to pass. Docket number 0602, the Committee on Ways and Means to which was referred on April 8, 2020, docket number 0602, message and order authorizing a limit for the mayor's Office of Arts and Culture Revolving Fund for fiscal year 2021 to purchase goods and services to support public art, to enhance the public realm throughout the city of Boston. Submit a report recommending the order ought to pass. Docket number 0603, the Committee on Ways and Means to which was referred on April 8, 2020, docket number 0603, message and order authorizing a limit for the distributed, distributed Energy Resources Revolving Fund for fiscal year 2021 to facilitate the purchase of offsets of greenhouse gas emissions, which shall be associated with a portion of the electricity consumed by the city annually, and to operate, maintain, and monitor and expand the city's existing solar arrays and Boston Public Schools' combined heat and power facilities. Submit a report recommending the order ought to pass. Docket number 0604, the Committee on Ways and Means to which was referred on April 8, 2020, docket number 0604, message and order authorizing, excuse me, a limit for the Parks and Parks Department Revolving Fund for fiscal year 2021 to reimburse the administrative costs to those city agencies which enforce the CVC, Chapter 16, Section 1.9 and 1.9B, and for costs associated with licensing and registration. Submit a report recommending the order ought to pass. Docket number 0605, Committee on Ways and Means to which was referred on April 8, 2020, docket number 0605, message and order authorizing a limit for the Boston Center for Youth and Families Revolving Fund for fiscal year 2021 to pay salaries and benefits of employees and to purchase supplies and equipment necessary to operate the City Hall childcare. Submit a report recommending the order ought to pass. Docket number 0606, the Committee on Ways and Means to which was referred on April 8, 2020, docket number 0606, message and order authorizing a limit for the Boston Public Schools Revolving Fund for fiscal year 2021 to submit the maintenance and repairs to BPS facilities, including custodial and utility costs for extended building time, school police costs associated with events, floor refinishing, landscaping, and building repairs. Submit a report recommending the order ought to pass. Docket number 0607, the Committee on Ways and Means to which was referred on April 8, 2020, docket number 0607, message and order authorizing a limit for the Boston Public Schools Revolving Fund for fiscal year 2021 to repair and purchase Boston Public Schools' computer technology, including computers, mobile devices, and instructional software. Submit a report recommending the order ought to pass. Docket number 0608, the Committee on Ways and Means to which was referred on April 8, 2020, docket number 0608, message and order authorizing a limit for the Boston Public Schools Revolving Fund for fiscal year 2021. The Boston Public Schools' transportation costs, including bus and public transportation costs, submit a report recommending the order ought to pass. Docket number 0609, the Committee on Ways and Means to which was referred on April 8, 2020, docket number 0609, message and order authorizing a limit for the Boston Police Department Revolving Fund for fiscal year 2021 to submit training programs for offices for, from non-city-of-Boston law enforcement agencies. Submit a report recommending the order ought to pass. Docket number 0610, the Committee on Ways and Means to which was referred on April 8, 2020, docket 0610, message and order authorizing a limit for the Boston Police Department Revolving Fund for fiscal year 2021 to support the K-9s Unit Training Program for Offices and Police Dogs from non-city-of-Boston law enforcement agencies. Submit a report recommending the order ought to pass. Docket number 0611, the Committee on Ways and Means to which was referred on April 8, 2020, docket number 0611, message and order authorizing a limit for the Boston Police Department Revolving Fund for fiscal year 2021 to pay salaries and benefits of employees to purchase, excuse me, to purchase supplies and equipment necessary to operate the Police Department's Fitness Center. Submit a report recommending the order ought to pass. And I think I'm reading the next two also?
I think we're gonna stop at six, yeah, the letter, and I think you just finished that?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Counsel Buck, who is our Chair on the Ways and Means Committee. Counsel Buck, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President, and thank you, Madam Clerk, for reading all those. The, what, what these committee reports are on are the 13 revolving funds that we have scattered across city departments. So for folks, just to understand, revolving funds are a type of mechanism the city is allowed to have by state law that takes in funds for a very particular reason and then expends funds for a very particular related purpose. So for instance, one of them is that at schools, if someone rents our school buildings and they pay us some money for the rental, then we spend some of that money on the kind of cleanup and staffing that you need to support that rental, right? So the, in state law, these have to be very tightly connected purposes, and they, and they can't be sort of used to fund general personnel and such. And the city council's job here is actually not to approve an appropriation. We are merely approving the maximum limit for each of these revolving funds. So the council has considered over the course of its 27 hearings, these revolving funds as part of those departmental hearings. And we've also received information from the city departments, specific information in a particular sort of standard format on every one of these revolving funds. So we've scrutinized them, and the question before us today is just approving their maximum limits for the year ahead, how much money the fund can hold at once. And my recommendation as Chair is that all of these orders ought to pass.
Thank you so much. And we'll do a voice vote on these dockets, and we'll take them separately. And so we'll start with docket 0599. Counsel Buck seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0599. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? The ayes have it. And docket 0599 has been passed. We'll now move on to docket 0600. Counsel Buck seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0600. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? The ayes have it, and docket 0600 has been passed. Counsel Buck seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0601. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? The ayes have it, and the committee report has been accepted. Docket 0601 has been passed. Counsel Buck seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0602. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? The ayes have it. The committee report has been accepted, and docket 0602 has been passed. Counsel Buck seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0603. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? The ayes have it, and the committee report has been accepted. Docket 0603 has been passed. We'll go on to docket 0604. Counsel Buck seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0604. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? The ayes have it. The committee report has been accepted, and docket 0604 has been passed. Counsel Buck seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0605. All those in favor say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed, nay? The ayes have it. The committee report has been accepted, and docket 0605 has been passed. Counsel Buck seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0606. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? The ayes have it. Docket 0606 has been passed. Counsel Buck seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0607. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? The ayes have it. The committee report has, and docket 0607 has been passed. Counsel Buck seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0608. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? The ayes have it. The committee report has been accepted, and docket 0608 has been passed. Counsel Buck seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0609. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? The ayes have it, and docket, the committee report has been accepted, and docket 0609 has been passed. Counsel Buck seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0610. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? The ayes have it. The committee report has been accepted, and docket 0610 has been passed. And this is the last one. Counsel Buck seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0611. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? The ayes have it. The committee report has been accepted, and docket 0611 has been passed. Madam Clerk, could you please read docket 0612?
Docket 0612, the Committee on Ways and Means to which was referred on April 8, 2020, docket number 0612, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to enter into a memorandum of understanding with certain entities for the purpose of reporting costs and receiving title for E. Every student succeed at allowable federal reimbursement for said costs as they relate to transporting eligible children from foster placements and school. Submit a report recommending the order ought to pass.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counsel Buck. Counsel Buck, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President. This is an order which enables basically us to receive reimbursement for the transportation of foster kids so that they can have continuity in the school that they're attending. And we can get support through the federal and state government for, for that transportation. So I, I mean, you know, think that's a, it's a very important cause. And again, this is, it's not an appropriation by us. It's a, it's, it's authorizing this MOU so that we can get the reimbursement. So my recommendation as Chair is that this matter ought to pass.
Thank you. Counsel Buck seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0612. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? The ayes have it, and the committee report has been accepted. No, no committee report. It's been accepted, and docket 0612 has been passed. Madam Clerk, could we go on to 0613?
Docket 0613, the Committee on Ways and Means to which was referred on April 8, 2020, docket number 0613, message and order authorizing appropriation from the Boston Equity Fund to create a special revenue project grant to support revenue project grant to support equity applicants and licenses to establish and operate a cannabis business in the city of Boston, pursuant to the city of Boston's ordinances, Chapter 8, Section 13. Submit a report recommending the order ought to pass.
Thank you so much. The Chair recognizes Counsel Buck.
Thank you, Madam President. This order reflects the setting up of the, the funding out of the Boston Equity Fund, which was set up by yourself and, and many other members of this council to, to help make our cannabis industry, our nascent cannabis industry more equitable and benefit those who were most affected by the war on drugs over the past few decades. So this is a mechanism which enables a transfer from that equity fund into this special grant program in order to support, provide technical assistance for equity applicants and licensees to establish and operate cannabis businesses in the city of Boston. As folks know, Boston's currently home to two medical marijuana dispensaries and a newly opened recreational dispensary, which was the first of its kind in the city, and also the first economic empowerment applicant approved in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. As, as everyone knows, you know, we had been hoping that we would see much more, you know, more things opening up and more activity, economic activity on this front in the coming year. But it's really important for us to have this mechanism so that as that, as that industry grows, it grows in an equitable way, supported by the city. So as Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means, I recommend moving the listed docket to the, I recommend that, to the full council that this matter ought to pass. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Counsel Buck seeks acceptance of this report and recommends that this order ought to pass. This is docket 0613. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? The ayes have it. The committee report has been accepted, and docket 0613 has been passed. Madam Clerk, we will take docket 0593 through 0596 together, please.
Thank you, Madam President. Docket number 0593, the Committee on Ways and Means to which was referred on April 8, 2020, docket number 0593, message and order approving the appropriation of $328,895,000 to the acquisition of interest in land or in the acquisition of assets of the landscaping alterations remediation rehabilitation improvement of public land, the construction reconstruction rehabilitation improvement operations remodeling enlargement, demolition removal of extraordinary repairs of public buildings, facilities, assets, work or infrastructure for the cost of feasibility studies or engineering or architectural services for plans and specifications for the development design, purchase and installation of computer hardware and software, the computer assisted integrated financial management and accounting systems, and any and all incidental or related to the above described projects for the purpose of the various city departments, including Boston Center for Youth and Families, Patient and Health, Environment, Fire, Neighborhood Development, Office of Arts and Culture, Parks and Recreation, Departments of Public Health, Boston Public Health Commission, submit a report recommending the order ought to pass. Docket number 0594, the Committee on Ways and Means to which was referred on April 8, 2020, docket number 0594, message and order approving the appropriation of $73,990,000 to the acquisition of interest in land or the acquisition of assets of the landscaping alterations remediation rehabilitation or improvement of public land, the construction reconstruction rehabilitation improvement alterations remodeling enlargement demolition, removal of extraordinary and/or extraordinary repairs of public buildings, facilities, assets, architectural services for plans and specifications for the development design, purchase and installation of computer hardware or software and computer assisted integrated financial management and accounting systems, and any and all costs incidental or related to the above described projects for the purpose of the Boston Public Schools, submit a report recommending the order ought to receive the first reading and assigned for further action. Docket number 0595, the Committee on Ways and Means to which was referred on April 8, 2020, docket number 0595, message and order approving the appropriation of $12,615,504 for the purpose of paying cost of Boston Arts Academy located at 174 Ipswich Street in the city of Boston, including the payment of all in the City of Boston, including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto. And for the City of Boston may be eligible for the grant to the Massachusetts School Building Authority known as MSBA. Said amount is to be expended under the direction of the Public Facilities Department on behalf of the Boston Public Schools submits a report recommending the order ought to receive its first reading and assigned for further action. Docket number 0596, the Committee on Ways and Means to which was referred on April 8, docket number 0596. Message and order authorizing City of Boston to enter into one or more leases, lease purchase or installment sales agreements in fiscal year 2021 in an amount not to exceed $36,400,000. These funds are to be used by various departments for the acquisition of equipment and furtherance of their respective governmental functions. The list of equipment includes computer, equipment, hardware and software, motor vehicles, trailers, ambulance firefighting equipment, office equipment, telecommunication equipment, photocopying equipment, medical equipment, school and educational equipment, school buses, parking meters, streetlights, installations, traffic signal equipment and equipment functionally related to and components of foregoing to the report recommending the order ought to be read for the first time and assigned for further action.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The Chair recognizes Counselor Bach, our Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means. Counselor Bach, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. And thank you to you and all my colleagues for your patience. This is the last report for me. I, so for, for folks' orientation at home, when the city council votes on a thing like the capital budget that, that endettes the city, right? It commits the city to borrowing on behalf of public purposes. There's a law, again, a state regulation that we need to vote on such a matter twice with a two-thirds majority, and it needs to, those two votes have to take place at least two weeks apart. And that's designed to make sure that legislative bodies, you know, think about the, think seriously about taking on debt for the city. This is a time in which our, a robust capital budget is extremely important for the City of Boston. As we, as we face, you know, this great economic uncertainty because of the city's strong bond rating, there's really an opportunity to make sure that, you know, as we're, as we're facing challenges on the operating budget side, that on a capital budget, we really invest in infrastructure that's good for the whole city and that creates jobs. And so, you know, the administration has proposed a, a very substantial capital budget this year that goes right up to the 7% policy limit, which is a question of how much, how much debt we take on while still making sure it's a responsible amount that we can service in the years ahead. The, I think there's a lot of excitement on the council about lots of things that are in this budget. I already mentioned, there's a doubling of tree planting. There is, there's lots of great, you know, work to make our schools both more hospitable to our students and also from a public health perspective, safer. There is, you know, commitment to, to fire stations, to all kinds of street work, you know, Boston Transportation Department projects to make the streets safer for all people. 10% of this budget is committed to resiliency and climate preparedness related projects. 1% of it is committed to the arts. There are ongoing conversations still about, you know, specific projects and their timing. I know that district by district, there are particular things that counselors are concerned about, and it's important for people to understand that when we vote on these orders, we're actually, we're voting on taking on the indebtedness and appropriating the scale of capital budget. There's still the opportunity to have those back and forth about the exact programming of that funding. But, you know, at a time when frankly, the, the level of government that can really move the needle on rescuing our economy and spending countercyclically is the federal government and after them the state, the capital budget is really the one place where the city can try to make a contribution on that front while also building infrastructure that the public will count on for generations. I would be remiss not to mention, because it has its own order in here, that the completion of the Boston Arts Academy, which is in my district, would also be a huge, a huge benefit to students from around the city and would mean really having a, the, I think, you know, we hope the most state-of-the-art performing arts academy in the country. And so my recommendation today is that, is that we, we take this vote to designate this capital budget, these series of loan orders and capital appropriation orders as read for the first time and assigned for further action, which is a way, it's a way of making reference to that need for us later in the month to vote on this matter again in order for it to pass. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much. So we'll do a roll call vote and we'll take each docket separately, and we'll start with docket 0593. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Thank you, Madam President. Counselor Arroyo.
Can I just ask clarifying question? So a yes here is for passage?
No, it's not passage. It's for docket to receive its first reading.
First reading.
Be signed for further act.
So, so Madam Clerk, so, Madam Clerk, does anyone else, if we need clarification, again? Is everyone good? Does that help you, Counselor Arroyo?
Thank you. Want to make sure, you know, first by the law.
Nope, I get it.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Madam Clerk, I'm sorry.
That's right. Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Bach.
Yes.
Counselor Bach, yes. Counselor Braden.
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Asabi George.
Yes.
Counselor Asabi George, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Janey.
Yes.
Counsel Janey, yes. Counsel Mahia.
Yes.
Counsel Mahia, yes. Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes. And Counsel Wu. Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Thank you. Counsel Wu, yes. Madam President, docket number 0593 has received its first reading.
Thank you so much. Docket 0593 has received its first reading and will be assigned for further action. Next up, docket 0594. Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Yes.
I mean, call the roll.
Thank you. Doc, Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo.
Yes, did that not go through?
Yep. Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker.
Yes.
Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Bach.
Yes.
Counsel Bach, yes. Counsel Braden. Counsel Braden.
Yes.
Yes. I think that was a yes. Thumbs up. Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Asabi George.
Yes.
Counsel Asabi George, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Janey.
Yes.
Counsel Janey, yes. Counsel Mahia.
Yes.
Counsel Mahia, yes. Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes. And Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. Madam President, docket number 0594 has received its first reading.
Thank you. Docket 0594, having received its first reading, will be assigned for further action. We'll now move on to docket 0595. Madam Clerk, could you please call a roll?
Thank you. Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker.
Yes.
Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Bach.
Yes.
Counsel Bach, yes. Counsel Braden.
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Is that two votes? I don't know. Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Asabi George.
Yes.
Counsel Asabi George. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Janey.
Yes.
Counsel Janey, yes. Counsel Mahia.
Yes.
Counsel Mahia, yes. Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes. And Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. Madam President, docket number 0595 has received its first reading with a unanimous vote.
Thank you. Docket 0595, having received its first reading, will be assigned for further action. And last, we have docket 0596. Madam Clerk, could you please call a roll?
Thank you. Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker.
Yes.
Counsel Baker, yes?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Counsel Bach.
Yes.
Counsel Bach, yes. Counsel Braden.
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Asabi George.
Yes.
Counsel Asabi George, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Janey.
Yes.
Counsel Janey, yes. Counsel Mahia.
Yes.
Counsel Mahia, yes. Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes. And Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. Madam President, docket number 0596 has received a unanimous first vote.
Thank you. Docket 0596, having received its first reading, will be assigned for further action. Madam Clerk, could you please read docket 0505?
Thank you. Docket 0505, the Committee on Government Operations to which is referred March 11, 2020. Docket number 0505. Order approving a petition for a special law regarding an act regarding the disability pension for Scott O'Brien, Ryan Lanane, Harry Jean, Terry Cotton, Curtis Darkinger, Matthew Morris, Richard Centolo. Submits a report recommending the home rule petition ought to be rejected without prejudice.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The Chair recognizes Counsel Edwards, who is the Chair of GovOps. Counsel Edwards, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. The Committee on Government Ops first received this matter from Counselor Asabi George, who was the lead sponsor, on March 11. The committee held a hearing on May 22, where the public was invited to, to have some comments. In this hearing, this hearing specifically is about a home rule petition that would increase the accidental disability retirement allowance payable to seven officers, specifically named the proposal. Mass General Laws, Chapter 32, Section 7, governs the accidental disability retirement allowance and currently allows for a yearly amount of pension equal to 72% of the annual rate of the officer's regular compensation. This proposal would increase the retirement allowance to the rate of compensation that the officer would have received had the officer continued service as, as an officer. So add up, basically increasing it from 72% to 100%. The home rule petition also provides for the surviving spouse as follows. An annuity in the amount of three-fourths of the amount of the pension payable to the officer per month at the time of the officer's death. If the surviving spouse remains unmarried, but if the surviving spouse remarries, the city shall pay in lieu of the afforded said annuity, an annuity of $550 per month. At the hearing, the committee reviewed the retirement process, the history, the, how this council and how this body has gone through and assessed these matters before. We discussed the statutes and regulations that govern accidental disability retirement and the legal standard to qualify for it. The standard to qualify for accidental disability is defined as follows. Physically unable to perform the essential duties and responsibilities of the job and that such inability is likely or deemed to be permanent by reason of a personal injury or violent act injury sustained while in the performance of official duties. We discussed these factors to determine, we discussed these factors to determine whether an injury is permanent. The committee reviewed precedent and, and that, excuse me, reviewed precedents and, and findings for incapacity, incapacity as required to, to approve the increase of the retirement allowance. Essentially looking at the process, we understood that we needed more data. We needed packets. We needed to understand first and foremost that all of the officers had been retired, which they have not. And then we needed them to come with all of their evidence or packets prepared by the retirement committee in order for us to assess them. In short, what, we started a very important conversation. We got a lot of historical knowledge and many of us requested from our colleague Counselor Asabi George, a lot of data that we feel would be necessary to make an informed decision. And as a result, Counselor Asabi George and I spoke, I believe, last week about taking this home rule petition and using this opportunity to reject it, to allow for Counselor Asabi George to bring back to the body an individual basis, each one of the home rule petitions to be assessed when they are fully retired and have all of the information before us. So I am recommending that you accept the committee report and you reject this current matter as it stands, all seven together, reject it without prejudice.
Thank you so much. Counselor Edwards seeks acceptance of the committee report and recommends that the council reject without prejudice, docket 0505. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The committee report has been accepted and docket 0505 has been rejected without prejudice. We'll now move on to motions, orders, and resolutions. I've been informed that docket 0745 has been withdrawn. So we will move on to docket 0746. Madam Clerk, could you please read that?
Thank you, Madam President. Docket 0746, Councilors Braden and Flynn offer the following resolution in support of state legislator bills regarding the occupational presumption of exposure to COVID-19.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Braden. Counsel Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, colleagues. On May 27, the Committee on Small Business and Workforce Development held a hearing on occupational presumption for essential workers. And we heard from many representatives of our unions in... We had a very...
Counsel Braden? Counsel Braden, we're having a very difficult time hearing you. I'm going to ask that perhaps you modify your remarks and cut it short. Or if you'd like, we can maybe call upon your co-sponsor while you see if there's something you can do on your internet, whatever your preference is. Would you like to continue?
I'll try and keep my, my, my remarks short and Counsel Flynn can expand on it if I'm cutting out. We had a hearing on the 27th to discuss occupational presumption of exposure to 19 for our essential workers. This is asking my colleagues to support, to, to extend support for legislation regarding occupational presumption of exposure to COVID-19 as, for different bills that are passing through the House at the State, at the State House at this time. House Bill 4739, House Bill 5050, House Bill 4749. Many of us have been working from the safety of admitting our exposure to COVID-19, but for so... So these bills are... The actions of occupational health benefits if they've suffered, if they've been exposed and become ill from COVID-19. I urge you to support this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Counsel Braden. We couldn't make all of that out, but I'm, I'm confident that you had really good remarks on this. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank, thank you, Madam President. Madam President, I want to say thank you to Counsel Braden for including me in this resolution for her longtime work in, in this field as well. This resolution, as Counsel Braden mentioned, is in support of several pieces of legislation This resolution, as Counselor Braden mentioned, is in support of several pieces of legislation now up at the State House that would help address the issue of occupational presumption for many in our healthcare fields, our workers, essential workers. This will bring some respect and dignity to our workers on the front line, saving lives every day for residents across our city and across our state. This body has always stood with working men and women to make sure that they're treated with respect and dignity and including in the workforce. This is just another example of our bodies standing once again in support of working women, working men across our city and across our state. And I also want to say thank you to my colleagues for always being there in support of working families that work every day, struggle every day, paying bills, and educating our children. So again, want to say thank you to all of my colleagues for always being there for working men and women in our city.
Thank you so much. Now, this is the point where I'm really going to need some help, folks, managing other speakers. I'm looking at the participant list, and I will call upon speakers if I see a blue hand for brief, brief remarks. I'm not seeing anyone, so at this time, I'm going to ask if people want to sign on. And again, I'm going to need some help here because I can't see you guys. So, oh, the blue hands are great. I can see blue hands. So if you'd like, are these for speaking? Let me see who has a blue hand. I'm going to call upon Counselor Mejia. Would you like to speak, or are you raising your hand to sign on?
Just signing on, Madam President.
Wonderful. So why don't we do that? If people could show blue hands for signing on to this important resolution, I will just read the list of blue hands. So far, I see six. Madam Clerk, if you could please record Counselor Mejia, Counselor Sabby George, Counselor Bach, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Wu, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Edwards, Counselor Arroyo, and please also add the Chair to that. I appreciate you. Counselors Braden and Counselors Flynn seek suspension of the rules and passage and adoption of docket 0746. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and docket 0746 has been adopted. I'm now going to turn... Excuse me?
Can you add me? For some reason, my internet is going in and out.
Yes, yes.
Thank you, my apologies.
For reconsideration, well, just please add Counselor Campbell to that.
Thank you.
And if some of us are not on mute, if you could mute some of the background noises picking up on the microphones there. Thank you so much. I am now going to turn the gavel over to the Vice Chair, Counselor O'Malley, who will call upon the clerk to read the next three dockets. Counselor O'Malley?
Thank you, Madam President. Madam Clerk, could you please read into the record docket number 0747?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Docket 0747, Counselor Braden and Janey offer the following order for hearing regarding the status of college and university plans to reopen for fall 2020 amid the COVID-19 pandemic.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The Chair recognizes the District Counsel from Alston-Brighton. Counselor Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I seek suspension of the rules and would like to use Article 12 to add Counselor Bach as a co-sponsor.
Hearing no objection to the invocation of Rule 12, Counselor Bach is so added as the third original co-sponsor.
Thank you. We have experienced an incredible disruption in life in the city, and so much activity in the city is related to the universities and colleges. And on May 13th, colleges and schools threw intention to bring their students back on campus at the end of August. And it seemed was taken, and this amount of consultation with the petition.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
Hearing...
I'm sorry, Counselor Braden, just to interrupt briefly. You may want to try stopping your video. That may improve the quality of the audio. Thank you.
Let me try that. Oh dear.
It's still pretty choppy. Would you like me to come back to you, maybe? If you were to, I think you can go through a phone audio, which may be better, and turning off when you click on audio settings at the bottom right-hand side of your computer.
Let me see. Audio, oh, Zoom has gone out completely now. Lost me completely.
All right. Counselor Braden, if it's okay, I'm going to go to the Council President and then Counselor Bach, and then we'll return to you if that's okay?
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The Chair now, we will get back to the lead sponsor upon addressing some technical difficulties. Now we'll go to the first co-sponsor. I now call on the Council President and District 7 Counselor. Counselor Janey, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. And I will be brief. I too am having technical difficulties, but I want to say that I'm grateful for the partnership of Counselor Braden and for Counselor Bach. The three of us have many universities and colleges in our districts. We know here in Boston, we have some of the best colleges and universities in our nation, and quite frankly, in the world. And they provide an important service in terms of educating young people from all over the world, and that's wonderful. They responded very early in the crisis by shutting down their campuses, which was the responsible thing to do. There were some unintended consequences in that decision, in having to figure out what are we doing with all of these students. As we prepare for the fall, I think that same question is before us. And at this point, it's unclear whether or not students will be returning to campus, whether the campuses will be closed and they're forced to find housing in our districts. All that being said, there are a lot of unanswered questions that I think we need some answers to. So I'm just really grateful to be able to join in this effort with Counselor Braden and Counselor Bach. And at this point, I would turn it over to our third co-sponsor, if our lead sponsor is not quite ready. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam President. The Chair now recognizes the District Counsel from Beacon Hill. District 8 Counselor, Counselor Bach, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, like Counselor Janey and Counselor Braden, represent a district with a large number of colleges and universities. And it's really important that as we plan for students to return, we ensure that we prioritize the well-being and health, not only of our students, but also of the entire ecosystem around those schools. So that's thinking about dining, worker staff, that's thinking about janitorial staff, you know, the faculty, the adjuncts. I myself, as folks know, teach as an adjunct at a university. And this is, it's a really important set of residential communities in our city and also a set of flourishing businesses, along with being the research hubs where we hope we'll find the vaccine to the situation, right? So it's just, it's a, it's, the operation of our universities and colleges is totally intertwined with the healthy operation of the city. And so it's something that the City Council needs to be paying attention to, be part of the conversation with. I think Counselor Braden, when she went out, referenced the fact that, to some extent, colleges and universities sometimes make these decisions kind of very much in isolation or as their own sort of separate fiefdoms, and that needs to be a collective conversation we're having. And also thinking just about how to support the students and workers who are put into particularly challenging circumstances, whether because they're low income, they've been rendered homeless, they lost jobs, they were counting on for summer income. I mean, there's a lot for us to look at. And I think I've been so grateful for the many ways in which our colleges and universities have been partners in responding over the last few months. And we need to really keep and continue that partnership and also make sure that our colleges and universities are able to come back on the other side of this. Because I think we have a large number of institutions in the city that have existed for a long time, but for whom an uncertain semester ahead is a really challenging thing fiscally. So it's an important conversation, and it's one this council needs to be involved in. And so I'm very grateful to Counselor Braden and President Janey for allowing me to join as a co-sponsor of this matter. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Bach. Before we go back to Counselor Braden, if any counselors would like to speak on this particular issue, please click the Participant tab at the bottom left of your screen or on your phone if you touch the bottom, and raise your blue hand. We'll then take co-sponsors through a physical raise of the hand. The Chair now recognizes the District Counsel from Alston-Brighton. Counselor Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. Do you hear me?
We hear you loudly and clearly. Thank you.
Oh, good. Thank you. Sorry for the technical difficulties. My colleagues, Counselor Bach and President Janey, have spoken to many of the issues and concerns that I wanted to address. The universities are such an integral part of our life here in the city, and we look forward to welcoming our students back on campus. But it's really important that we do so in an orderly fashion and well-coordinated and managed return to campus so that we can avoid a future surge in infections in the city. So I look forward to this hearing order, and I'm very grateful to my colleagues for their co-sponsoring this hearing order. And thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Braden, and thank you for coming back. The Chair now recognizes the District Counsel from East Boston. Counselor Edwards, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. I want to thank all of the original sponsors, I think. And I wanted to just to thank them also for their leadership and really pushing this conversation so early because it's not just going to be, we don't want to be confronting this in the fall. That being said, I want to include in this conversation not just the thank yous to the universities, but also the acknowledgement that they have a role to play in how the entire city is going to recover from COVID. And if they choose any kind of campus life or limited campus life, that they should be considering how they allow the rest of the community to use their facilities, whether it's to socially distance in our high schools and education facilities to help us have access to some of the amenities to allow for our city to continue. So I'm excited about this hearing. I'm excited about talking about how the universities are going to be doing better and making sure we're all healthy. And I again want to thank the original sponsors of this matter.
Thank you, Counselor. Would you like your name added?
Yes.
Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Edwards as a co-sponsor. The Chair now recognizes the at-large Counsel from South Boston. Counselor Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Please add my name. Obviously, this is a great discussion we should be having, as mentioned, and I've said it ad nauseam, and it was stated by the Council President that we boast of the best colleges and universities in the world. They're also some of our largest employers, and they're great partners for our city. They're the reason why thousands of students come here, and many actually stay here after they get their education. So they're great economic generators. They're also great for drawing in the world's brain power right here to Boston. So I want to make sure that, you know, we, being very respectful of the role that they play in our city, and also encourage all of my colleagues, for those that haven't done so, to reach out to all of our college and university presidents and their heads of government affairs and have that dialogue. If there's a council that's sitting here now that doesn't know a president of one of our colleges or universities, someone from government affairs, then that's on us. That's on us to pick up the phone and reach out and introduce yourself and create that dialogue. They can be extremely helpful to us as a city, but also as we service our constituents in our various communities of Boston. So that's my two cents. Look forward to having the hearing and look forward to the continued partnership that we have with our colleges and universities. They don't bat a thousand. We know that. We have a lot of issues around our schools, how they impact our housing crisis, how they impact the quality of life around the schools, and obviously pilot payment of moving taxes. So we've had our fair share of scraps over the years with our schools as well. But that said, just for everyone's edification, if we have councils, particularly our newer members, if they don't know the folks that are running the institutions literally in their backyard, indoor even just across the city, and I'd make the same argument for our hospitals and our health centers as well. So that said, look forward to the hearing. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Flaherty. Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Flaherty's name as original co-sponsor. Yes, as a co-sponsor, excuse me. Seeing no more discussion, would any counselors wish to add their name? Please raise your hand. Madam Clerk, please add the District Counsel from South Boston. Counselor Flynn, please add the at-large Counsel from Dorchester. Counselor Sabby George, please add the District Counsel from Hyde Park. Counselor Arroyo, please add the at-large Counsel from Dorchester. Counselor Mejia, please add the at-large Counsel from Rosendale. Counselor Wu, and please add my name, Madam Chair, and please add the District Counsel from Mattapan. Counselor Campbell.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you now please read docket 0748 into the record?
Docket 0748, Councilors Wu and Janey offer the following resolution, recognizing June as National Caribbean American Heritage Month.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The Chair now recognizes the at-large Counselor from Rosendale. Counselor Wu, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and add Counselor Mejia as an original co-sponsor.
Seeing no objection to the invocation of Rule 12, Counselor Mejia is hereby added as an original co-sponsor.
Thank you very much. We all, year after year, love to come together and celebrate the diversity, the beauty, the strength, all the incredible contributions of our Caribbean-American community in Boston this year. As with many other things, it's a little bit different. So proud to offer this resolution with the Boston City Council and just assure the community that we are standing with them, even though many of the festivities and large gatherings won't be possible. I know there was an event yesterday. I was proud to join the Council President on just making sure that the council was once again loud and proud in supporting our Caribbean-American brothers and sisters and thanking them for everything that they add to the city of Boston. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Wu. The Chair now recognizes the Council President and District Counsel from District 7. Counselor Janey, you have the floor. Madam President.
Technical difficulties. Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. I'm grateful for the opportunity to partner with Counselor Wu and Counselor Mejia. I really love how this body connects with the Caribbean-American community here. There's so much joy, and it's one of the things I really love, the different breakfasts and the different flag raisings, celebrating that experience. For me, as a Black woman, my experience is very much rooted in the African-American experience. My ancestors come from the South. And so this, by celebrating Caribbean-Americans and their contributions in our city, has really forced me to tap into my own Caribbean roots. My great-grandparents, I have a set of great-grandparents that are from Guyana. And it really makes me reflect, particularly with everything that is going on in our world, the connectivity of us all, and thinking of myself as a daughter of the diaspora and how we are all connected here. And though I, my experience is very much rooted in the African-American tradition, I am still very much connected to my brothers and sisters in the Caribbean. And so I'm grateful to be reminded of that. I'm grateful for all of the ways, the many individuals, like Malcolm X, Roxbury resident, so many others have contributed to our society. I think of all of the ways that our culture is enriched, the different businesses, the art, the restaurants in my district like Merengue, Fort Hill Barn Grill. There are just so many flames, so many great ways that we celebrate Caribbean culture. And I'm just reminded of how important that is because I find so much joy in that, and I miss it. So I'm grateful to celebrate today. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. The Chair now recognizes the at-large Counsel from Dorchester. Counselor Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you. So thank you to the makers. Thank you, Counselor.
So thank you to the makers, thank you councillor Wu and president council Janey for giving me the opportunity to join you in this resolution. And as a Dominican who came to this country, I really do appreciate celebrating our roots and our journey here to the States. I always say that Caribbean, it's not just about the spice and the flavor of our food, it's about the culture and the way we navigate and the businesses that we've built and how we build community. So really grateful to be amplifying and celebrating the Caribbean-American heritage this month. And I also want to give a quick little shout out to councillor O'Malley, who is an honorary Dominican. We can't, we can't, we can't acknowledge Caribbean-American Day without giving you councillor O'Malley a little shout out because, you know, Dominicans have embraced you as one of those. And, you know, everybody knows that council president Janey is also laughing. So yes, celebrating all of our people and really grateful to do so, thank you.
Thank you, thank you councillor, appreciate that. If any councillors would like to speak on this, please again raise your blue hand. Councillor, the chair now recognizes the district councillor from East Boston councillor Edwards, you have the floor. Unless that was from the earlier, that may have been from the earlier, okay, thank you. The chair now recognizes the district councillor from Mattapan councillor Campbell, you have the floor.
Can you see me? Awesome, thank you councillor O'Malley and thank you to the makers for the resolution. I too, you know, we've been celebrating virtually, but would be remiss if I did not acknowledge all of the incredible folks in my community representing many Caribbean countries. And, you know, my family comes from Jamaica, my grandfather is from there. So there's a lot of cultural traditions to celebrate. And so I just wanted to add my voice to say, although we're doing it virtually, we still are obviously taking the time. So thank you to the makers for the resolution. And I just realized I have Aiden's cloth on me still, so thank you to all the mothers out there. And essentially, you know, many of these folks who come from this immigrant background are frontline workers, are essential workers and have been doing the hard work every single day, so thank you to them as well, thank you.
Thank you councillor. Would you like to, I assume you'd like to add your name councillor Campbell?
Yes, thank you.
Please add the name of councillor Campbell, the chair now recognizes the at-large councillor from South Boston councillor Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, please add my name, the Caribbean community is a great community in our city, lends tremendous value. My relationship with them dates back to my first meeting with Clarence Cooper, which has then been, was taken over by a beloved Shirley Schillingford and folks over the Caribbean Cultural Center. The work they do at the food pantry, particularly around Thanksgiving and actually all year round, has been tremendous. So we're blessed to have so many great Caribbean's in our city. And those are relationships that I respect, that I trust and that I cherish. And so looking forward to celebrating with them. I know that sort of the parade calendar is been, seems to be on hold, I guess, for now, or at least for the end of the year. But that said, hopefully we'll have an opportunity to celebrate that National Caribbean American Heritage Month with our Caribbean friends. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you councillor Flaherty, appreciate it. The chair now recognizes the district eight city councillor from Beacon Hill councillor Buck, you have the floor.
Thank you, I'll keep it very brief, I just wanted to echo councillor Flaherty's shout out to Shirley Schillingford, who lives in my district, it's a fond memory of mine knocking doors last summer, walking by and chatting with her from her porch. And yeah, just wanted to say that, you know, I think I were so grateful for these festivities every year. And especially on the Mission Hill part of my district, there's lots of folks who very actively participate and really look forward to them. And so I just wanted to add my name to the shout outs and ask Mr. Chairman that you add my name, thanks.
Thank you councillor Buck, every person should be lucky enough to know Shirley Schillingford and how lucky are we to count her in our lives. So thank you for that and councillor Flaherty and others for bringing her wonderful service up to our community. The, seeing no further discussion, would any councillors wish to add their name? Madam Chair, please add the district two city councillor councillor Flynn as a co-sponsor. Please add the at-large councillor from Dorchester councillor Siaby George as a co-sponsor. Please add the district councillor from Hyde Park councillor Royal as a co-sponsor. Please add the district councillor from Alston-Brighton councillor Brayden as a co-sponsor. Please add the district councillor from East Boston councillor Edwards as a co-sponsor. Please add the chair as a co-sponsor. Councillors Wu, Janey and Mahia move for suspension and adoption of docket 0748. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay, the ayes have it, the docket is adopted. Madam Clerk, I neglected to assign docket 0747 to the relevant committee, so I would like to move to revisit and assign docket 0747 to the Committee on Public Health.
So recorded.
Okay, thank you, apologies for that. Madam Clerk, would you now please read docket number 0749 into the record?
Thank you. Docket 0749 councillors Mahia and Arroyo offer the following resolution in support of federal action condemning police brutality, racial profiling and the use of excessive and militarized force.
Thank you, madam clerk, the chair now recognizes the at-large councillor from Dorchester councillor Mahia, you have the floor.
Thank you Chair and O'Malley, I would like to suspend the rules and add our, an original co-sponsor, president council Janey. And I would also like to thank councillor Arroyo for their voices and strength during this time. So I wanted to just pause and see whether or not we could suspend the rules and add president council Janey to this.
Thank you councillor Mahia, seeing no objection to the invocation of rule 12, the council president is hereby added as original co-sponsor.
Thank you, thank you. George Floyd, Rihanna Taylor, Figueroa, Sandra Bland, Michael Brown, Alton Sterling, Tony Robinson, Dominique Wise, Eric Wallace, Philip White, and as of yesterday, David Makee. These are names, just some names, of those who have been killed as a result of police brutality. So often during this ongoing COVID-19 pandemic, we hear of the desire to return to normal. But if this is what normal looks like, then we have no business going back there in the first place. In fact, we have a moral obligation as elected officials to ensure that not only do we refuse to return to that level of normalcy, but that we build a better future for our friends, our family, our neighbors and our community. This resolution is a statement of our values. Our budget is also a value statement. We just don't need resolutions, we need to change how we fund our police department. If the goal of the police is to protect and serve, we need to start focusing on the service part. That means less money for facial recognition software that disproportionately misidentifies black and brown people, military gear that injures peaceful protesters, that so-called, and that so-called gang database. And yes, overtime as well. As grim, as traumatic as the past few weeks may have been, we still stand again and continue our fight for justice, for civil rights, for mental health and for each other. We'll lead with what makes us strong. We are not in crisis, we are not in crisis or at risk or vulnerable. We are resilient and determined. This is a call for accountability and a call for all of us to commit to what the work is that lies ahead. The work begins with passing this resolution. I'm asking to suspend the rules and pass and pass and hope that all of my colleagues will stand with us on this critical issue, thank you.
Thank you councillor Mahia, the chair now recognizes the district five councillor, councillor Royal, you have the floor.
Thank you. Like so many of you, this has been a difficult time. It's an emotional time, but in the interest of speaking truth, even when it makes my voice shake, I'd like to say that racism is not new, racial inequity is here in Boston. Systemic racism is here in Boston. In March, my maiden speech was on racism as a public health crisis in Boston. The data showed it was true then, it overwhelmingly shows it's true now. These are not new issues. Yesterday, some of you may have seen me spoke, speak on an encounter that I had with Massachusetts state trooper. What some of you may not have known is at that time, I just as easily could have recounted encounters that I've had with Boston police officers. If you are pledging to do more now, I first want to say thank you, we need you. But ask yourself why there is space for you to do more, why you weren't doing all you could before and what you are willing to do now and in the future to match the urgency that these issues demand. Systemic racism and racial inequality are tangible things. They look like a gang database that classifies you for white and that you can be added to without ever being seen or alleged to have committed a crime. A gang database that is 97% people of color and well over 70% black in a city where black people only compromise, comprise 23% of the population. They look like the same 23% of the city's population, accounting for 70% of the Boston Police Department's field interrogation and observations. They look like the Boston Police Patrolmen's Association declaring in a written letter just three months ago during Black History Month, no less, that Boston Public Schools should not participate in Black Lives Matter at school week. We don't have recent numbers, but from 2015 to the present, for 2015 to the present, but they look like $36 million in city of Boston settlements to resolve over 2,000 claims against BPD from 2005 to 2015, money that could have and should have gone to our communities. They look like only 1% rounding up of Boston $664 million in procurement contracts going to people of color or women in the city that is in poorly, people of color. They look like black and brown people dying and contracting COVID at disproportionate rates and reopening society without all of the necessary safeguards required for their protection. I could go on and on, but systems are creation, are creations, with real offices. Our offices are at one system's headquarters. We have a responsibility to hold it accountable and to speak and act on these deep inequities every day. We have a responsibility to speak truth. We have a responsibility to ensure that government bodies, especially our municipal government headed by the mayor, a position that's endowed with substantial power, that those government bodies demonstrate through their actions and policy that they are doing all they can to care for black and brown bodies. What are you personally willing to do to disrupt these systems that do not serve us? And please let it be more than words, thank you.
Thank you councillor Arroyo, the chair now recognizes the council president councillor Janey, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to thank my co-sponsors, the lead councillor Mahia and councillor Arroyo, certainly other colleagues for their work. Reminded what councillor Mahia said, what I've been saying, what many of us have been saying, is that we don't want to go back to normal, that normal has been killing us. And I've said this and I feel as if people receive that as an exaggeration, grandstanding, but it's not. And so whether we're dying in the street after eight minutes and 46 seconds or whether it's a long, slow, painful death, that is what is happening in black and brown communities all across America. I think of my father in seemingly perfect health, very successful, not immune to racism in this country, dying at 73 years old. And I wonder how much of all of this between COVID, between having to constantly fight for my own life, having the weight of all of this, being the council president and wanting to move this forward for our people, I wonder how much time is being shaved off my own life right now? How much time? I'm really proud to sponsor this, as I've said before, this is a critical time in our nation's history and just like black lives, how we respond in Boston matters. I feel incredibly honored to be the president of the most diverse council in Boston's history. And as the leader of this council, as the president, I'm committed to pushing an agenda that promotes and protects true liberation of black people in our country. I'm proud to work and support legislation and orders that tackle systems meant to persecute and oppress black lives. On the council, that's our ordinance on surveillance oversight, the tax amendment for the Boston zoning code. It's the Boston procurement and how we spend our money and making sure that more of it goes into black and brown businesses and businesses owned by women and so many other ways. And there's a lot more that we have to do. Our fight involves more than just putting an end to police brutality, and I said that yesterday, because we need legislation that lifts up the people who have been left behind. We need legislation that tackles discriminatory housing. We need legislation that deals with our overwhelming and persistent opportunity and achievement gaps in our schools. We need the strategies to deal with the health disparities. And we all know about the wealth gap in Boston. And I think we know, I think we recognize, I hope we recognize, how we got here with that wealth gap and that that was created by policy. I know that this system will not crumble easily. Dismantling it will take work, it will take political will and it will take all of us, everyone, even those who benefit from this system. We need true solidarity and I'm hoping that all of us will recommit our way, ourselves to creating a more just and equitable world for those who live in our city, across our Commonwealth and in our country. We need real solidarity. I hope that all of my colleagues will sign on and we are asking for suspension of the rules and adoption of this resolution, thank you so much.
Thank you, madam president. The chair now recognizes the district councillor from East Boston, district one councillor Edwards, you have the floor.
Thank you very much and thank you to the, to the makers. I honestly have a lot to say and so if you'll indulge me as as an African-American that represents a district that is not very diverse in terms of African-Americans, as the first black person to represent district one, first person of color in this time, I'm at many different tables and actually more than one language. And in these tables, I hear some, so many things about hurt and pain and anger and then a lot of butt fours and if they weren't rioting and if they weren't dealing with and so on and so forth. I hear people who love me deeply, who should, who would fight for me personally, dismiss the pain of a lot of African-Americans in my district. And I'm in a unique position, I think I'm the only person, only district city councillor that doesn't represent, that is a minority in their own district, I'll say it that way. So it's a unique position to have this conversation in a neat perspective, to deal with the kind of pain. I want to address the folks in my district and throughout Boston and maybe even the country who cringe at the words white privilege because they feel that it says that their life wasn't easy. Let me, let me, let me disconnect those two words. When someone says a person has white privilege, it is not saying your life was easy. It is not saying that you didn't grow up in the projects, on government cheese, that you weren't beaten up, that you weren't made fun of, that you weren't sexually assaulted, that you weren't dealing with alcoholism. It doesn't say any of those things. It doesn't say you didn't work your damnedest to get where you are. It is saying that one burden you didn't have was the color of your skin. And so when I say I don't have that, that is not saying that therefore you had it easier. Or when I ask you to recognize racism, I'm asking you to see a burden that I have that you may not. And it's important that people understand the separation. Another thing I want people to understand is to understand, especially in this particular moment, and this is me speaking as a Catholic now. We have been here before. We have watched a system protect people who went on to create generational trauma in others in our community. That literally had people question whether God exists and has resulted in God only knows how much trauma and to the, to some even killing themselves, not being able to live with the burden of what happened to them. Less than 1% of the Catholic priests were child molesters and abusers, less than 9%. And this is what's important for all of you to understand and why this resolution is so important. It is not a call for individual acts. It is a call for a systemic overhaul, which is what we had to do as Catholics when we were challenged for the first, in a, in a systemic way. It was not the individual priests who were bad actors that caused the problem. It was the fact that the system moved them from church to church, covered for them, prevented them from being held accountable, prevented them from being arrested. That you, I can, I can name several people. I know many people on this council can name people who were abused, raped by these men. And it was the system that enhanced their abuse. This officer who murdered George Floyd had 18 complaints against him. This is a buildup. It's a slight touch that they get away with for the first time. It's the quiet conversation that they whisper in the child's ear. It's the way they isolate them and groom them. That only happens when the system allows for you to perpetuate evil. That is why this resolution, and that is why the call for systemic change in the police, in our DA system, in our criminal justice system is necessary. I hope you understand the parallel. Less than 1%, I'm sure, police officers are abusers, are, are, are creating horrible things and doing horrible bigoted things. I have them in my family. Majority of them are good, honest people who wanted to be superheroes when they grew up. They wanted to be the good guys. They wanted to fight for people. But it is because of the system that off, that murderers can get away with perpetuating. It's the first push, it's the violation of civil rights, it's the lying on the reports, and the other officers that allow for that to happen due to their own fear. Because of the system, system never holds that one person accountable. Who the hell are they as a young recruit to stand up to them? Who are they? Where are they gonna go? What are they gonna do in terms of facing retribution? So that is why when we call for a civilian review board, when we call to look at how we enforce our laws, when we call for how we're going to deal with bad actors, we're calling for systemic response. If you do not do it this way, then it's as simple as just moving that priest to another church. And I say that as a Catholic. I still believe in my church, but it needs a systemic response. So all I can say is at this moment, I'm in pain. So many people are in pain. Every single one of us, the city councillors, have to rise to the occasion. I don't want your hashtags. I don't want your prayers and thoughts. I don't want your butt for the rioting or butt for the businesses. I want you to vote for progressive, equitable legislation. And if you don't, vote for it. Know that you are, you are withholding and not supporting systemic change.
Thank you, Councilor Edwards. Uh, I assume you'd like your name added as a co-sponsor. Madam Clerk, please add the name of the District One City Councillor, Lydia Edwards. Uh, the chair now recognizes the at-large councillor from Rosendale. Councilor Wu, you have the floor.
Thank you, um, Mr. Chairman. Thank you to the, the sponsors of this, councillors Mahia, Arroyo, our Council President Janie, and of course to Congresswoman Presley for looking at this issue and, and leading in a historic way at, at the federal level on behalf of, um, the city. Um, please add my name. Eight minutes and 42nd, eight minutes and 46 seconds is a long time. And we wouldn't have known it was that long unless that courageous civilian had decided to record it and make sure that the world couldn't turn away. And, you know, even in this meeting and, and many meetings recently, we've been observing eight minutes and 46 seconds of silence in reflection and in mourning. But George Floyd was not silent for that whole time. He cried out for help until he couldn't cry out anymore. He cried out for his mom. I won't forget that cry. That cry for mama is a sound that is precious and sacred for any mother. It's one that I hear dozens of times a day when we're here at, working from home. And when you hear it, you're ready to act, you're ready to run over and do anything for your child. George Floyd's mother couldn't go to him because she passed away two years ago. But I am sure that she thought about that moment when she was alive. That moment that he might be in trouble at the hands of those sworn to protect and serve, just as any parent, guardian, loved one of young black boys in America have to do today. As an Asian American woman, I want to emphasize that we, we need collective action for advocacy towards racial equity and, and justice. But for this meeting, I want to be really clear about where the power and responsibility lies to change that. It is in the hands of elected and appointed officials. It is in our hands. Police brutality is a direct result of systemic racism, and it's one of many violences inflicted on our communities because government has failed to act. Our housing crisis, climate change, mass incarceration, hunger, food insecurity, lack of transit access. In the midst of a pandemic, people are protesting and rallying right now because of government's failure to protect black lives from the coronavirus. Now that failure has been compounded by our continued outrageous failure to stop state sanctioned violence produced by centuries of oppression. I'm done with complacent failure. And I just want to urge anyone who is watching. The questions for elected officials, should it be whether we can point to some work that we've done to address racism, but whether we are taking all possible action within our power to implement anti-racist policies? Legislation, budgets, oversight? This is the moment to reshape our society and our city to a place where all are safe, where all children of, where children of color aren't left behind because of inequities in our school system, where black families are valued for their sacred value, not at a median net worth of $8. And that work is on us at the city level, who have the power and the tools to get this done. We need a civilian review board subpoena power. We need demilitarization of the Boston police, ending the gang database, passing ordinances already filed in this council to ban face surveillance and ensure proper oversight of all surveillance by the police and the city. A deep look at where our budget dollars are going and acting accordingly. And if we're serious about the commitment to anti-racist policy, if we're serious that black lives matter, then this council must dig in for procurement reform in Boston, fair housing, pass Councillor Edwards's amendment for furthering, affirmatively furthering fair housing, closing the rush, wait, racial wealth divide, quality education for every student, fair free public transportation, clean air, water, healthy communities. That is when every mama, every child, every person will have justice and peace. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Wu. Madam Clerk, please add Councilor Wu's name as a co-sponsor. The chair now recognizes the at-large councillor from South Boston, Councilor Flaherty, you have the floor. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you're muted, Councilor Flaherty.
Sorry again, Mr. Chair, technical difficulties. Uh, I'd like to have my name added in support of the resolution as our colleagues of color spoke, uh, yesterday during the press conference and again, uh, this morning on our, uh, daily call. We have a responsibility as elected leaders to address racism, inequities and injustices in our city, state and country, wherever they appear. We're part of the council family. Uh, I, I don't walk, um, you know, in, in their shoes, but I hear and, and, and feel the pain in their voices. Uh, and as evident with our colleague, um, Councilor Lydia Edwards just speaking a few moments ago and, and Councilor Wu before me. As leaders and as a community, we need to take advantage of, of this moment to do a deeper dive and, and show up for one another. Uh, we need understanding and empathy in legislation that will move us forward. As Councilor Arroyo alluded to, it's not just about, or, or one of our other colleagues might mention, not just about showing up at rallies and giving speeches. It's about doing the work. I use the expression, it's running out the ground ball. It's, it's connecting someone to a job opportunity. It's finding housing for someone. It's improving our schools. It's helping a kid get into college. Uh, it's all of those things. It's, it's getting, during this pandemic, I've said it, uh, if I've said it once, I've said it multiple times on our calls. It's, it's getting folks hooked up on, on a healthcare plan and to, to, to provide some, some hope and opportunity, uh, and, and restore confidence in our healthcare system and get them a primary care physician. It's all of that too. I've, uh, I've, I've led those efforts, I've partnered on those efforts, and I've been an ally and a team player on those efforts. And, uh, just here, uh, as a member of this council family, uh, reaching out to colleagues, uh, with understanding, uh, and wanting folks to know that I'm prepared to work with you. And, uh, let's not let the, the message of the peaceful protesters, um, you know, uh, be lost for our city, for our state and, and for our country. So that said, again, please add my name. As I mentioned, I'm an ally. And again, it's not just about showing up at a rally or giving speeches. Uh, let's roll up our sleeves, let's do a deeper dive, and let's connect people to opportunities. Let's put people to work, let's put people at homes, let's put them in primary care physician's hands. Um, let's do all of those things, uh, that we need to do to, to improve the quality of life for all of our residents that call Boston their home and beyond. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilor Flaherty. Madam Clerk, please add, uh, Councilor Flaherty as a co-sponsor. Uh, the chair now recognizes the at-large councillor from Dorchester. Councilor Sabi George, you have the floor.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, and please add my name. I think that it's important to note, and we've, we've said this through the COVID-19 pandemic, and we, it's, it's more important than ever to say it now that we are in this together. We need to be in this together. I hope, um, that as a city and as a country, that we can get to a better place where we are all able to say that black lives matter, that we are able to, to do this work in partnership and to do the meaningful work in partnership, that it is more than just supporting this resolution, which of course, I'm proud to sign on today to support, uh, the work of our former colleague, Congresswoman Presley, and her efforts at, um, in the Congress and to support the work of our colleagues who have put this here before us today. And this idea of being present for one another is really, uh, critically important during this time, especially for our, uh, residents across the city who are African American, who are black, uh, who need us the most at this moment in time. So there is, uh, countless, uh, opportunities for what the work is that lies ahead. And, um, although this is a resolution that I wholeheartedly support, it is certainly not about the resolution. It is about the work that lays before us, uh, that is left undone. Uh, so please add my name. Thank you to the lead sponsors for bringing this before us. And, um, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, uh, Councilor Sabi George. Madam Clerk, please add Councilor Sabi George as a co-sponsor. The chair now recognizes, uh, the district councillor from Alston-Brighton. Councilor Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mr. Chairman. I, I hardly have words to say, to, to, to really express the emotions I'm feeling. I'm, I'm very deeply saddened and angered by all that has happened. And I really want to extend my, uh, my solidarity and support of all my colleagues on the city council who are, um, struggling with this incredibly difficult situation. The COVID-19 crisis, uh, brought into very clear and painful focus the racial inequities in housing, education, health and access to healthcare, food security and economic opportunity. And the disproportionate impact of COVID-19 on our black and brown neighbors and friends is emblematic of how long, of a long and, and longstanding systemic racism that has real and frightening consequences. I think the horror of seeing a white police officer kneeling on the neck of, uh, George Floyd, uh, until he died was just another example of how as a society we devalue, abuse and kill our fellow citizens because of the color of their skin, African Americans. At this moment, we're, we've really been called to change how we do things. And we as white people are being called to raise our awareness of all the advantages that we have because of the color of our skin. We need to raise our consciousness of all the ways that we are treated differently at a traffic stop, at a doc, in the doctor's office, in the store, or when we try to buy a house. We need to acknowledge the systemic racism that has existed in this country for centuries. And it is baked into every institution. And in this time, it's really important to bring it all out into the light of day and to own it, to own the systemic racism, to say that's there, just, it's to recognize it and to begin to do the hard work of doing something about it. Uh, it's not going to be easy. It's, it's really, uh, important and vital that we do this work, but it will, it, it takes a lot of reflection and deep, deep reflection on, and, and courage and determination to step forward and make sure that we are going to go forward from this and that we are not going to go back. So I, please add my name to this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Braden. Uh, Madam Clerk, please add Councilor Liz Braden as a co-sponsor. The chair now recognizes the, uh, district councillor from District Four, from Mattapan. Councilor Campbell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Um, and thank you to the makers for bringing forth the resolution. Thank you to, of course, Congresswoman Presley, um, for her leadership and continued leadership, especially on these critical issues. I also want to thank my colleagues and particularly my colleagues of color who have so courageously shared their stories, whether it was in the last few days or years before this. Thank you for your vulnerability. Thank you for your courage. I too, Councilor President, uh, Janie, share at moments the stress and the pain. And I have been reflecting on that stress and how it kills people, especially people of color. So to those who might be watching this, please pay attention to these moments. They are triggering and making sure we take care of ourselves is critically important. And why is that important? Because we have hard work to do on behalf of our constituency. I represent a district of color, predominantly a district of color. But we know all across the city of Boston, we have constituents, obviously, who are people of color, who need our support and who need us to be courageous, to be bold and to be innovative. When I think of George Floyd and many others who have been brutally and painfully murdered by police or other systems, I cannot help but think about my twin brother. So it is triggering for me on many levels. And the accountability or lack of accountability is also real for me. To this day, my family still does not know how my twin brother passed away. All we do know is that he died while in the custody of the Department of Correction, which oversees our prisons, and that he was a pre-trial detainee, that he had a disease called scleroderma, that, and as a result of receiving inadequate healthcare, he passed away while in that system. The details are still unknown, lots of records unknown, and no one has ever called my family or me to say, what happened there and what can we do about it? So I feel the pain of those families who wait for our government and our institutions to call them to be not only more transparent, but to do something with respect to their loved ones' loss, especially, especially when it's captured on video and made plain that it is murder. Right now, we have an opportunity, not only in the city, but in this country, to start to ask the tough questions. We are focusing on the wrong ones. We're focusing on why are they so angry? Why are they upset? Why are they stealing? Why are they looting? Why are they yelling at police? Those questions are important, absolutely. But if we are all committed not to be back here again, not to hear or see another video of a black man or black woman being killed here again, not to hear or see another video of a Black man or Black woman being killed by either law enforcement or another white person, or anyone for that matter, who devalues their life, we have to ask, why would a man press his knee on another human being's life or neck while he cried out not only for his mother, but while he cried out several times for help? Why would he do that? And for folks of color, we know the answer. It's race and racism. It's the foundation of this country. And so what we need is our allies, our accomplices, our white colleagues, our white constituents, those to begin to not only understand the pain, not only to say you're an ally, but to do the tough work of really understanding what we mean by race and racism, and what Counselor Edwards mentioned, white privilege. These words have meaning, and most of the folks I've been engaging with the last few weeks don't have a clue as to really what they are. And so if you really want some guidance, one, you could complete a racial equity training and do it fully and not leave when it gets uncomfortable. You could read this book, White Fragility. That's an easy step and I think a great place to start. There are many books out there that define these words, and in this particular book, White Fragility, Why It's So Hard For White People To Talk About Racism, I think she gets it right, and she has a tone in the book that hopefully tries to get folks to pull them in, and when they get uncomfortable, to continue to pull them in. That's a wonderful place to start, but if you're not willing to do that, to me, that means that you're not really willing to get to the root causes of why we continue to see Black people disproportionately killed by law enforcement, disproportionately in our criminal justice system, why we continue to see inequities show up in housing, in our schools, in food, you name it, the list is long. That's the hard work. When it comes to policing, that's my husband's phone, hold on. Thank you for indulging me. It's always nice, I guess, to have a laughter when you're talking about serious stuff. But when it comes to policing in particular, we have an opportunity to do some meaningful and significant things, and frankly, things that needed to be done a long time ago before people continued to die. These inequities within our policing system have existed for a long time, and so I think absolutely this is time for a civilian review board. We have a co-op board. We filed hearings on this council, or I filed hearings before this council, three separate hearings on this issue. Turn the co-op board into civilian review board. Diversify our public safety agencies. Amend civil service so more women and people of color have access to our department. Right now, in the police department, our top bureaus, which are overseeing gang units, the major bureaus, most of the most significant ones with the most power are run by all white men. We need to fix that. Body cameras, every unit should have it. The policy that informs body cameras should be informed by the people. The list is long on the things that we could be doing. Release data. We shouldn't have to fight to get FIO data and other relevant data. Transparency is key, but if we're serious, we need to push for greater transparency and accountability. I'm willing to do that with all of my colleagues, with advocates, with my residents, with the police union, you name it. I'm not uncomfortable talking to other people who may disagree, but this is the time to press forward on these critical issues. And lastly, I'll say, it's been a hard week. As I look at my two sons, who are both Black boys, a two-year-old and a five-month-old, as I think and reflect on this city that I love so much, and how we are so unwilling sometimes to have those tough conversations, I get pained. It is stressful. It is hard. And I look at my boys, and I want them to have more opportunity than I did, and for that to happen and for other folks to value their life just as much as I do. I encourage all my colleagues to have the tough conversations, to get uncomfortable. That's what it's going to require, and for all of our constituents to do the same. Our colleagues, I mean, our constituents follow our lead. So I hope that you continue to think about what you can do. I'm an ally to you. Call anytime, and I look forward to working in partnership with all of you. Thank you again to the makers.
Thank you.
Of course, please add my name.
Thank you, Councilor Campbell. Madam Clerk, please add Andrea Campbell as a co-sponsor. The chair now recognizes the District Eight Council from Beacon Hill. Councilor Bock, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I want to be brief. I really want to lift up in this moment the voices of my colleagues of color and let them stand in their witness to the hard work that we have to do and the work that is so overdue. I just want to say, in my capacity as the Chair of Ways and Means, because I think one of the things folks have lifted up, right, is that this needs to turn into concrete action. You know, I think we have a police budget that is more than 11% of our overall budget. It's 15% of our general fund allocation. We don't, as a council, have adequate line item information about that budget. I requested that in our BPD hearing, and the response I got was a photocopy of the not-detailed page that we already have in the budget book. I think that, you know, what it looks like for us to own collectively, our collective responsibility for what public safety looks like, and whether it means actual safety for people of all skin colors, or if it actually means danger for many of our fellow citizens, like, that is, as Councilor Wu said, a political decision, and it's a political set of decisions that this council needs to exercise oversight over. And I, in my capacity as Ways and Means Chair, I'm going to be pushing for the information that we need to do that and hope to be an ally in that work. And I think we have to acknowledge that that's a long road. It's not just about one budget. It's about the way that we negotiate our collective bargaining agreements as a city. It's a whole tangle of things. It's about what people, to a point that a council president has made this week, it's about what people think they're doing when they call the police to solve a problem that they perceive, right? I mean, it's about a whole set of things nested up together, but I think one of the reasons that we are here again and again is that actually, most of the authority over law enforcement sits at the local level in this country. And so we have historically, you know, been unable to figure out how to solve it at a national level, partly because it is the hard work that we have to do, community by community. And I hope and intend to be an ally in that work, and I just, I want to lift up the voices of all my colleagues and thank them for speaking today. Mr. Chairman, please add my name.
Thank you, Councilor. Madam Clerk, please add Councilor Kenzie Bach as a co-sponsor. The chair now recognizes the District Two Council from South Boston. Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to my colleagues on the City Council that spoke so eloquently on this issue. I hope I can be an ally with our colleagues on these important issues, critical issues, and I hope I was a good ally over the last two years, working closely with our colleagues on the City Council. I thought, when I first came to the council, I thought I knew about the city, and I thought I knew about race relations, and I probably didn't know a fraction of what I thought. And I learned really about our city and its people from listening, and talking, but mostly listening, to the woman on the City Council and their stories, not about politics, but about their life and about their struggles. And so I hope I can use those examples and become a better city councillor, but I also listened over the last week and over the last two years, mostly, but the mothers on the council also want the same for their children as my mother did, or as any other mother, any other mother did, and you want healthy children, you want successful, happy children. And that's another lesson I learned, is the important role that the women of color are playing in our city, on our council, in our government, is critical, and the more we're exposed to it and the more we talk and work closely on issues, the better city we are and the better body we become. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Flynn. I assume you'd like your name added?
Yeah, please add my name. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Flynn. I will, as a co-sponsor, I will take the vice chair's prerogative and just briefly add that, you know, when we talk about affirming Black Lives Mattering, and it's so much more than that, so many of you have said that, and words far more eloquent than my own, it's not just a tweet or a social media post or showing up at a vigil, although important, it's not just calling out microaggressions or overt racism or recognizing systemic racism and institutional racism that permeates every aspect of our society. It's about doing the work. It's about confronting the hard truths and the uncomfortableness that comes with that. And I, you know, if I truly want to be not just an ally, but an accomplice, it's what I have to do and it's what I'm prepared to do. I said this morning privately to all of you, and I will repeat it publicly, how proud I was of all members of this body, particularly the members of color, particularly the Black and Brown members who spoke at a press conference yesterday and outlined some really important ideas, to hear from our former colleague in my seat, May, for many, many years, Congresswoman Presley, whose resolution we are discussing today and will be voting on shortly. You know, as has been mentioned, she would conclude the Pledge of Allegiance with the two words, someday, and it is obviously beyond clear to everyone on the planet that we are far away from someday from achieving liberty and justice for all, but we have a lot of work to do, and we have a lot of uncomfortable truths to discuss, and we have a lot of opportunity to work together, and that's obviously what I'm prepared to do. I know we all are. So, Madam Clerk, please add my name as a original, as a co-sponsor, excuse me, to Doc at 0749. We will be voting on it shortly, but I know one of the original co-sponsors has asked for an opportunity to speak again, and if any of the other original co-sponsors would like a concluding word, of course, we'd be happy to allow that. So, Councilor Mahia, you now have the floor.
Yeah, thank you. So I'm not sure if anyone has been paying attention, but I just learned that all four have been arrested for the death of George Floyd, so that is a great move. I think it's important when we think about these little small wins and celebrate those and acknowledge them, but I would be remiss if I didn't say to my colleagues here, having grown up in Boston, who everybody knows is historically known to be one of the, we have the bad fame of being one of the most racist cities, is that we have an opportunity to really set the stage for what real reform is going to look like around this issue, right? Boston was also one of the first cities to have a police presence, I believe. We were the first in the nation for schools, we're the first on lots of things. We cannot be the last to get this right. And so I just want to thank my colleagues who are standing up and showing up and know that this is not just about a quick little soundbite during this public hearing, but we have an opportunity and a responsibility to uplift the voices of the people who put us in this seat. And it's not what you do while you're politicking during election time, it is what you do while you are in this seat. And everyone is looking to us as how we're going to move this work forward. And so I'm asking my colleagues and thanking you all at the same time for joining us in this conversation, but my hope is that you all will take the lead on things, too, so that it's not always us speaking upon these issues, but that we create an opportunity where we're supporting legislation and ordinances that speak to our plight. And I'm encouraging you to do that. I sit here today, today was a big deal for me. I'm in the seat where Congresswoman Ayanna Pressley once sat in, and this is her old office. And so to support her resolution on a local level means the world to me. You know, I wore the dress that I wore when I gave my maiden speech, because this day for me was one of those days that I never wanted to forget. And I'm sharing this with you all because I love and appreciate every single one of you, and I am grateful to be sitting alongside you on this journey, but trust that I will be holding everyone accountable, including myself, to making sure that we do all that we can to right the wrong. And thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Mahia. The chair now recognizes the council president, Councilor Janie, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to thank Councilor Campbell for sharing the book, White Fragility. I keep it on my desk back at the office in hopes of starting conversations with some of the people that I meet with every day, and I wanted to share another book because I think it's an important tool. I don't want to just come and say, you guys do better. I want to try to give you a tool to do better. So I hope people would take this book as well, and it's called How to Be an Anti-Racist, because that's what we really need here, people. I want to be clear, there is no neutrality. There is none. Either you are actively fighting to dismantle this system that is killing Black people, or you are part of the problem. There's no in-between. If you're not actively trying to dismantle it, then you are perpetuating that pain and that hurt that we have all been expressing today. And so this book, How to Be an Anti-Racist, is by Kenzie, and I thought it would really be helpful to my colleagues, particularly, I mean, all of us, but particularly those who are non-melanated, and I will read a short excerpt, and it says, and I quote, "Racist ideas have defined our society since its beginning and can feel so natural and obvious as to be banal, but anti-racist ideas remain difficult to comprehend, in part because they go against the flow of this country's history. As Audra Lord said in 1980, 'We have all been programmed to respond to human differences between us with fear and loathing,' and to handle that difference in one of three ways: one, to ignore it, and if that's not possible, copy it if we think it's dominant, and we can think of hip-hop culture, and I'm ad-libbing here, or destroy it if we think it's subordinate. But we have no patterns for relating across human differences as equals. There is no model for that. We have to create it." I'm ad-libbing again. We have to create that, people. And so oftentimes, what I find is when people are fighting for their humanity, others will say, "But," or "Wait," and not really understanding that we have to move forward together to dismantle this. And so I wanted to share this excerpt, because we have no patterns for relating across human differences as equals. It's our job to create that, and we cannot create that on top of the current foundation that we have. The foundation that we have is a system that devalues Black lives. We have to tear that down and create a new system where we can relate as human beings as equals. So I just wanted to share that book because I hope it will be helpful as we continue to have these conversations, because this is ongoing work. This is not, we're not solving this in this council meeting. We're not solving this with this resolution. This is ongoing work, but what I need is from my council, my colleagues on the council, to be willing to do the work. It is hard work and it is uncomfortable work. You have to be willing to have the tough conversations. You have to be willing to call out the nonsense when you hear it. Again, we cannot sit on the sideline silence, so I just wanted to share the book. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam President. Hearing no further discussion unless anyone else would like to speak again for the second round. Madam Clerk, I believe you've added everyone on this call as a co-sponsor. Everyone has... Everyone has expressed an interest in supporting the resolution. Not seeing any further discussion. Counselors Mejia, Arroyo, and Council President Janey now move for suspension of the rules and adoption of docket number 0749. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The docket is adopted.
Mr. Chair, I got the vote. I would like a roll call.
Thank you, Counselor Arroyo. Madam Clark, will you please read the roll call to ascertain the vote? Would you please record the ayes and nays?
I just need a, all right. So on docket 0749, Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker. Counsel, Counsel Baker. Counselor Bach.
Yes.
Counselor Bach, yes. Counselor Braden.
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Counsel, Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Sabby George.
Yes.
Counselor Sabby George, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Janey.
Yes.
Counselor Janey, yes. Counselor Mejia.
Yes.
Counselor Mejia, yes. Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes. And Counselor Wu.
Yes.
Counselor Wu, yes. Madam President, docket number 0749 has received a 12 to 0 vote on docket number 0749.
Thank you. I will assume the Chair back from the Vice Chair and will now move on to personnel orders. Madam Clark, will you please read docket, I mean, don't read the docket.
Personnel order.
Madam Clark, docket 0750. It's a personnel order. Thank you.
Thank you. Docket 0750, Counselor Janey for Counsel Flaherty.
Counselor Flaherty seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0750. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0750 has been passed.
Docket 0751, Counselor Janey for Counsel Flaherty.
Counsel Flaherty seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0751. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay. The ayes have it and docket 0751 has been passed. Don't believe we have any late files. I don't believe anyone wants to remove anything from the green sheets. So we will keep moving on. And we'll go on to announcements. I will ask my colleagues to show blue hands if they'd like to make an announcement. And please be patient with me if I don't get you right away. Anyone like to make, I see Counselor Braden. The Chair recognizes Counselor Braden.
Madam President, my little blue hand must have been up without my knowledge, so I have nothing to say.
No worries. Thank you. I want to be clear. You know what I'm going to do? I'm going to lower the hands. Counselor Arroyo, did you want to make a comment?
No, I think the hand is just up from the last.
Okay. If someone could get rid of all the blue hands. No announcements, folks? Is that what I'm hearing here?
I have one.
Thank you. Counselor Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Just want to adjourn, and this is on behalf of Counselor Edwards and I, that Charleston lost a legend with the passing of Billy Boyle, retired Boston firefighter, but also known as one of the creators, founders of, along with the gentleman by the name of Peter Looney of Chad, Charleston Against Drugs, did tremendous work in that community, helping young men and women who were struggling with substance abuse, drug addiction. And also founded, along with Cookie Whalen Giadano, the Charleston Live cable TV show that aired regularly for many, many years. So a permanent fixture. He was involved in everything in Charleston. He was involved in everything for all of the right reasons. Cared deeply about that town, cared about all the families and the kids. And a tremendous loss going to be felt by Charleston, a true legend that has walked the streets of Charleston and has been a partner here in the city of Boston. And also remiss if I didn't talk about a dear friend of mine from East Boston, also on behalf of Counselor Edwards and I, Johnny "Two Dogs" Roberto, beloved in East Boston and a lot of folks know him. Growing up, he was the guy that had all the hot dog and sausage carts downtown around Faneuil Hall. So died tragically in a motor vehicle accident over the weekend in Georgia and was a tremendous supporter of mine for many years. And is one of the reasons I do so well in East Boston is because of Johnny "Two Dogs" Roberto. So I want to adjourn in their memory to neighborhood people that will not be replaced. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Flaherty. Would any of my colleagues, anyone else want to make an announcement? Okay, I do not see any hands, so I will just make, yes? Who is that?
That's me. I have a hand and a.
I'm sorry. I can't, I'm so sorry. Again, I'm on the phone here. The Chair recognizes Counselor Edwards. You have the floor.
Thank you. I want to thank Counselor Flaherty. He has a longer, longer relationship, and his family does, with the Boyle family. I would be remiss not to also, just in the time that I got to know him as a City Councilor, to say that he is nothing short of a gentleman, a kind heart, and a generous soul. He is certainly part of a dying breed, I feel, of folks who just live and die for their neighborhood. And in a sense, I don't know, I don't know what Charleston does or any neighborhood does when they lose a Billy Boyle. I think we'll look for a long time, but he's irreplaceable. And from the day I started, he loves anyone who loves Charleston. And that's something that I find, it's beautiful to see. And something when you grew up in the military and you move around a lot, it's rare to you, right? Because you're prepared to always move around and change. But when you find people who live and die for the neighborhood and welcome anyone, as long as they love the neighborhood, it is just something that is rare. And with all the change that were happening, he was one of the, again, as I mentioned it before, the great oaks that are slowly going away with the institutional knowledge, with the understanding. He was a veteran, been through wars, fireman. He's been through a lot. And I think I'm just very proud to have known him. I also wanted to make an announcement that this Saturday, the Task Force on Affirmatively Furthering Fair Housing, after three years of working with the city of Boston, trying to work with the city of Boston and trying to come up with a comprehensive report on how the city of Boston can push equity. They're going to be releasing that report. There's been back and forth, but it's just going to happen. I'm proud of them for releasing this report this Saturday. And I will be there. It is a town hall. And when I get the link, I believe it's at 12 o'clock, and I will send it to my colleagues.
Thank you so much, Counselor Edwards. The Chair recognizes Counselor Mejia.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to acknowledge and just give a quick shout out to all of the young people who organized on Sunday the protest, the march, the peaceful march from NBE and Square to the State House. These young people took to the streets to have their voices heard and did so in a very fashionably orderly fashion. And I just, you know, many were organizing and marching for the first time and went there to have their voices heard. And after the whole situation went down, were somewhat distraught because of all that happened. Many couldn't get home. And so, but they still persisted. I saw them again on Tuesday at Monica Cannon's amazing vigil where 10,000 people showed up. So I just want to give a shout out to all the folks out here celebrating their voices and being heard and the ability to do so. And just wanted to just give them a big shout out and keeping them in my thoughts and in my revolutionary prayers as we continue to fight that good fight, always recognizing that we need to have an inside-outside strategy when it comes to trying to make anything change. And so having these folks out in these streets hooting and hollering and we're listening on the inside to move it, I think this is what these times require. And so really grateful to all of the activists out there. And just a word of warning to those who are coming into our neighborhoods thinking that they're going to come destroy us, let you know that this is our town. And so this is a nice little gentle reminder, don't come here thinking that you're going to burn us down because we ain't going to let you. So lots of love to all of those who are raising their voices and being heard. Stay safe. Love you all.
Thank you, Counselor Mejia. Would anyone else like to make a brief announcement? Okay, wonderful. And I appreciate you lifting up the protesters, Counselor Mejia. I'm very proud of how Boston has responded. And I'm particularly proud of the young people who are marching. And I'm thinking about my very first protest, I was probably, I don't know, 12, 13, 14 years old. And ironically, it was on police brutality in the South End. I don't know if Mel King had organized it, but it was there. And I just would make the point that young people are always at the forefront of our movements. So thank you for that. The Chair recognizes Counselor Flynn.
Thank you. Yes, thank you, Madam President. And Madam President, I also wanted to recognize a woman that passed away recently who was a friend. She was a wife, she was a mother, a grandmother. Her name was Mrs. Gan Toi Lee. She was a grandmother. She was an expert seamstress from China. We mourn the passing of her. She settled, coming from China and settled in Grove Hall with her family and established herself as an expert seamstress in the historic Gomit District in Boston Chinatown. And she really helped build this city and helped build this country, working hard as an immigrant that we see often in our city is they dedicate their life for their children by working so hard, often in difficult jobs and in low wages. So I had a lot of respect for her. And many of you know her daughter, who's also a friend of mine and many of the City Councilors, Michelle and Michael and so many, Lydia. But her daughter is Suzanne Lee, who was the principal at the Josiah Quincy School. So I just want to say our condolences to the Lee family on the passing of Mrs. Lee. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much, Counselor Edwards. Thank you for sharing that. I will reach out to Suzanne. Would any other colleagues like to make an announcement as we wrap up? Okay, not seeing any other blue hands. Well, not seeing any blue hands. But anyway, for me, I want to quickly say just another reminder to anyone watching to please fill out the U.S. Census. It is directly connected to our representation and the resources that we desperately need in our community. And I also want to remind people to register to vote. And I will also share, it's with sadness that I shared news of the passing of George Cox. Many of you may know him. He was a longtime BPS educator and a District Seven resident. One of the things that I appreciated most about George, and I worked with him for probably 20 years now, and I really appreciated his commitment to teacher development, whether it was on Intel Prep, he ran the Intel Prep program, his support of paraprofessionals. He really invested in teachers and that investment could be felt in the classroom. He was also very active in being the Black Educators Alliance in Massachusetts. He was a staunch advocate for teacher diversity and the elimination of the opportunity and achievement gaps. And if you didn't catch George at one of the several meetings or hearings or school committee meetings, you could always catch him reading to children at the Nathan Hale School in Roxbury. George will be missed. And so I want to offer my condolences to everyone who cherish his memory. And we will also close out the council meeting in memory of George Cox. So with that said, let's move on to memorials. We will adjourn today's meeting for the following individuals. For Counselor Baker, Benjamin Tankle, Sarah Darty, and Mary Maloney. For Counselor Braden, Annie Linden, James McGuire, and Pompeo Ventura. For Counselor Campbell, Keith Love. For Counselor Edwards, Maureen Barone, and Filomena Romano. For Counselors Edwards and Flaherty, Billy Boyle. For Counselor Flynn, Ms. Gan Toi Lee. For the Chair, James Allen Lofton Senior and George Cox. And on behalf of the entire council, Breonna Taylor and George Floyd. A moment of silence. The Chair moves. When the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. And it is scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, June 10th at 12:00 noon. For the safety of the general public and all involved, this meeting will be held virtually and posted online. Viewers can watch the council meeting live on YouTube by visiting boston.gov/city-council-tv. I'll repeat that, boston.gov/city-council-tv. All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it and the council meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I've had a first today. Three out of my four kids have shown up at some point during this meeting. Three out of four in bed.